Good evening and welcome to the City of Helena City Commission Meeting, January twenty fourth, twenty twenty-two, six P M. This meeting is called to order. Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to revive this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Would you rise for the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic which stands one nation, God, and the best vote, liberty, justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
City Attorney Jordan.
Here.
City Manager Harlow Schalk.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Fever. Apologize, Mr. Mayor. Getting Commissioner Fever into the panelists.
I am here. I am sorry.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
Our minutes from our regular commission meeting of August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, a regular commission meeting, September seventh, twenty twenty-one, administrative commission meeting, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, a regular commission meeting, January tenth, twenty twenty-two. Where we see, do we have any comments, suggestions, corrections to make? If not, it will be accepted. Proclamation, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, with your permission, I will share a video with the group for a pre-recorded ceremony earlier today.
Please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Directors. Commissioners. Today, we're sending Sharon off in grand style.
We can't see it, Madam Clerk.
The city since two thousand and four, and so on the twenty-sixth, we're going to be, it's gonna be Sharon Hoggins Day. So we have this proclamation for Sharon on behalf of the city, and it reads, "City of Helena proclamation. Whereas, beginning her distinguished career with the City of Helena in two thousand and four, Director Hoggins' legacy could be summarized in data and numbers, of which there are many to cite. Whereas forty-one years of dedication working at the state, county, and municipal governments, Director Hoggins exemplifies what is meant to be a public servant. Whereas Director Hoggins allocated more than five million dollars in housing and community development grants and leveraged eighty million dollars, which resulted in over six hundred housing units made available for the most vulnerable in the Helena community. While some simply use affordable housing as platitudes, Director Hoggins actually helped to build it. Whereas while working for the city, Director Hoggins supported nine different city managers and eighteen different city commissioners, all with respectful professionalism. Whereas she worked alongside four city attorneys, three parks directors, five finance directors, four public works directors, five fire chiefs, and three police chiefs. And while they were all her colleagues, many, she also counted amongst her friends. Whereas Director Hoggins sat patiently through eighteen hundred evening meetings, most with a sense of humor, some with a sense of smile, and at least one she would soon forget. Countless, whereas countless have the numbers of volunteers and community departments for which Director Hoggins is responsible for building and maintaining productive relationships, resulting in a community-wide impact for those most in need. While most can be listed, some include R N D C, Westmore, Inner Mountain, Y W C, Habitat for Humanity, Helena Housing Authority, M B A C, Bid, Center for Mental Health, and many more. Whereas twenty-eight is the number of points which separated Sharon's beloved Bison and her adopted home state team in twenty twenty-one N C A A Division One Championship game. And unknown are the numbers of gloating conversation since January eighth by Sharon herself. Whereas there are many members which illustrate the success of Director Hoggins' career, however, none so much as the innumerable times a single phrase was said in in the hall of three one six North Park. I just love Sharon. Now therefore be it resolved, I will, Madam Clerk, Mayor of the City of Helena, Montana, declare Monday, January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two as Director Sharon Hoggins' Day. In gratitude of her dedicated decades of service to the community, this commission and Helena residents, the impact of her service is far-reaching and tangible. Her legacy will live on nearly every city block. We thank her and wish her luck in whatever the future holds. In witness whereof, I have here to set my hand and call the seal of the City of Helena, Montana, to be affixed this twenty-sixth day of January, twenty twenty-two. Well, Madam Clerk, Mayor, Clerk of the Commission, in a playboy.
Sir, thank you.
Congratulations.
Can I have the mayor?
Of course you may.
No.
And now one other thing. We have this flag we want to present to you. We have the City of Helena presented to Community Development Director Sharon Hoggins in appreciation for your many years of loyal service to the City of Helena, two thousand and four to two thousand and twenty-two. These you can open at your leisure. When you are most relaxed, you can open it, and I know when. So you have the floor if you want to see a few words.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I want to say this. It's been a wonderful ride. I came to Helena in ninety-two, and when I came over the hill from the north, I knew I'd found my home. This city has never disappointed. When I first came to Helena, I had the privilege of working for the state of Montana in the Community Development Division, working on housing and housing-related activities. I got to see the star of such major projects such as Florence Grant Ten, the Transitional Area of God's Love, Queen City Estates, and many more projects. It was great to get to know all the great partners and the nonprofits of the city as well and along with the staff. Then I got the privilege of working with Lucipark County. And through the years, I got to work with some great folks from both the city and county in those endeavors, working on planning issues, community challenges, and solutions in both Helena, Lincoln, Augusta, and places in between. I don't want to talk about all those places, but they were. The last stop on this journey has been the best. In my position as Community Development Director, I have been able to work with this community's nonprofit organizations, business groups, and others, and now I've seen them accomplish some great things. I have in my own small way helped build the city into the great place it is and the safe place one can enjoy with your family. I found this city has so much potential now and in the future. Future, and I am thankful to have had a little part in that. None of this would not have been possible without a lot of people. I'd just want to thank all the hard-working and dedicated staff with whom I've had the pleasure of sharing this journey. This not only includes our current employees, who I can't say not good things about, but all those past employees who have showed their expertise and experience so freely with me. Want to thank each and every one of them from the bottom of my heart for everything they've done for me. I also want to thank the various city commissions, county commissions, all the various committees, boards, and other task force who have given their time and dedication for making Helena a better place to live. The city can't run without them, and I've learned so much from all of them. I also want to thank my family and friends who have provided support to me over the years, a shoulder to cry on or a beard to cry into when I needed it, and much love and laughter along the way. But most of all, I want to thank the public, who has given me their trust, their confidence, their time, and their energy to help make the city better and to challenge me to do a better job. I can't say enough about the experiences I've had working with each and every one of them and the lessons I've learned. I hope I've only earned those precious gifts that they've given me. I hope to see all of you from time to time. I want to stay around Helena for a while. And if I might, I would like to leave you with some advice from one of my favorite public servants. He said, "Always remember, do your homework, treat people with respect, and make your decisions with an honest purpose." I've tried to live by these words and on occasion have succeeded. Thank you all. Goodbye and good luck.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, if I may, one more time, this video was also posted to our YouTube page, so it will be available there as well.
That was Sharon telling us goodbye and good luck. We want to also tell her in this public forum again. Sharon, we appreciate all your hard work you've done for this city, the state, and this county. You will be missed. If there's any other commissioner who wants to express their gratitude, the floor is yours.
Mayor.
Commissioner Logan.
Thank you. Take a quick peek here. Yes, Sharon is on, so Sharon just would like to say thank you very much. Uh, that's a lot of years of service and a lot of good you've done for the community and and for specifically for the City of Helena and not just the community, but the municipality itself. And and I can speak directly um to having worked with Sharon and learned from her, learned a lot of things. As I became involved in the management of the Fire Department, Sharon was very helpful in terms of how the the fire service and the fire code uh worked its way into a community like Helena. It's it's not not a particularly linear path, and and to have someone like Sharon there to help you navigate through that's just uh was invaluable. She taught me to sit on the correct side of the chambers to avoid uh avoid the camera. I was very appreciative of that. Also, um, learned a lot about North Dakota and ethnic culture, and will remember that a lot. And and I just would like to say, Sharon, thank you for sticking around these last few years. I know um, you know, there was you may have stayed a little longer than you intended, but I think you helped uh get us to a much better place and and uh you know, you've really got big shoes to fill, but um again, I really thank you for for um everything you've done for us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dean.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I don't think I could say it better than Commissioner Logan and the mayor did, but um I think the in the proclamation where it mentions that you really are the epitome of a public servant. I have seen that firsthand the last couple of years. I know that I would not have made it through my first two years on the commission without um your expertise and guidance and always being someone willing to answer a question um and providing comedic relief when we needed it as well. Um, and so I'm just immensely grateful for your service and and um selfishly, all the support that you've provided in learning the ropes. But truly, Helena would not be where it is today without you and without the direction that you've provided over the the last few decades, and I'm very excited for you to have some new adventures and really hope that you'll stop by and say hello. Um, but truly appreciate everything you've done for our community.
Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I am really grateful for the time I got to spend with Director Hoggins as the interim city manager, and I'm glad we got to overlap, albeit very briefly um before her departure. Uh, thank you for your service. Thank you for your experience. Thank you for your wisdom, and as indicated, thank you for your wit. Uh, I distinctly recall uh in my early tenures interim city manager feeling one of those drinking from a fire hose days. Uh, and you and I had a conversation, and it was the first time I'd laughed in a while, so I will always be grateful to you for your perspective and your willingness to share your knowledge with everybody. Uh, again, I'm I'm really grateful. We had a brief chance to work together. I wish you the best of luck, um, and thank you so much for everything you've done for our community.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Fever.
Well, Sharon, I of alone among all the commissioners and the mayor, I'm the only one who hasn't worked with you at all. I mean, I've just met you and you're leaving. It almost seems unfair uh because I know that you have an enormous amount of experience uh and expertise and wisdom to share. Well, I guess I'll miss out on all of that, but if you ever drop me a note, I'd be willing to accept it and read it and respond because uh we can certainly use folks like you to keep us going forward. Whatever you do next, enjoy it. Enjoy it a lot.
Thank you. Sharon, you want to say anything else, or you've said enough?
Uh, thank you all for your kind words. I know I'm leaving the city in great hands. Let's um get to work.
Okay, we will. Board appointments. Airport Authority Commission. Appointment of Bart Bob Herbertley to an interim appointment on the Helena Airport Authority.
Mr. Mayor. I apologize. I wouldn't. I don't want to interrupt, uh, but I believe you're reading from a previous memo. Tonight's board appointment.
Oh, this. That is correct. That is correct. I was looking at it minutes. Sorry. Sorry to the public. Let me get you. There we are. Board appointments. I'm recommending the following board appointment. Helena Public Arts Committee. Reappointment of Jenny's strap to a first term on the Helena Public Arts Committee as a member-at-large. Term will begin upon appointment and expires on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Do we have any discussion on that?
Happy to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Please go ahead.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I will move to reappoint Jenny Staff to a first, well, actually appoint then Jenny Staff to a first term on the Helena Public Arts Committee as a member-at-large. Term will begin upon appointment and expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Hi.
Commissioner Fever.
Hi.
Commissioner Logan.
Hi.
Commissioner Reed.
Hi.
Mayor Collins.
Hi.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Consider an amendment of right-of-way of contract between the City of Helena and Yellowstone Pipeline Company across Bill Roberts Golf Course. Manager Hollis Shaw and Parks Director Kristy Pinosa. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This item is an item on consent, and I recommend that you entertain a motion of consent to consider in the consideration of this amendment and adopt the amendment, which would result in a right-of-way contract between the City of Helena and Yellowstone Pipeline Company to improve the right-of-way access across the Bill Roberts Golf Course. This access agreement has been in place for a number of years since nineteen fifty-three, I believe, and as a motion of consent, a full presentation is not required. If you have any questions, though, uh, Director Pinosa is available. Should you have them? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Comments uh from the commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, do we have any raised hands from the public?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no hands raised, and I've received no written public comment on this item.
Madam Clerk, would you take the vote, please?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, did we get a motion on that?
Oh.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve an amendment of right-of-way contract between the City of Helena and Yellowstone Pipeline Company across Bill Roberts Golf Course.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean. Commissioner Fever.
Hi.
Commissioner Logan.
Hi.
Commissioner Reed.
Hi.
Mayor Collins.
Hi.
The motion carries back to zero.
Thank you. Communications proposals from the Commissioner. Commissioners, do you have anything you want to put out? I don't see any raised hands from the Commissioners. We will move along. Report of the City Attorney, Attorney Jordan.
Uh, Mayor Collins, Commissioners, I don't have anything to report, but I would like to say uh thank you, Sharon, for your years of hard work, and I wanted to correct a misstatement that I had made at uh the commission orientation when I stated that I had worked with Sharon half of my adult life. That was incorrect. I've worked with Sharon half of my life, almost all of my adult life. So thank you, Sharon, for your guidance, your tutoring, your mentoring, the many laughs, a few tears along the way, and hope we can still uh continue to see each other around, which I'm sure we will. Good luck.
Thank you, Attorney Jordan. Report of the City Manager, Manager Hollis Shaw.
Good evening, Mayor. Uh, quickly, also want to say thank you and congratulations, Sharon. I am very proud to have had time with Sharon this last year. Before I had even gotten to Helena, I asked around nationally with the uh Community Development Block Grant Team on a national level, and Sharon has an excellent reputation and has always represented the City of Helena well. So in advance of even coming here, Sharon and her reputation was well-known. And also very thankful for her sage advice and many thankful laughs I've also had with Sharon in spaces where uh they were really, really needed. So thank you, Sharon, for also being that person who would be willing to step into the space and calm a crowd when uh things could be a little bit um not so calm. Thank you, Sharon, for everything you've done for the city and for the amount of experience that you're trying to offload, I know, in these last weeks to our team. I know we all appreciate the time you've spent, especially going into tonight's agenda. Quickly, just a couple of updates, and then we'll um let it go. I know that I first want to ask that um City Attorney Jordan share with you all uh the revision to tonight's agenda, which was made Friday night. I will ask that he do that after I complete just a quick uh few quick updates. I think it'd be important to share to you why it looks different between the November uh meeting on the items on this agenda and tonight's meeting. Also, uh just want to remind everyone that oh, we're open from uh Monday through Saturday at the Bill Roberts Golf Course at Munees uh from eleven A M. to eight P M. We do have Todd uh Filterr is the new operations manager and head of uh head golf pro, as well, Kelsey Carter is our food and beverage manager. Uh, please feel free to stop by. We also are having um passes available for sale as well. The opportunity exists to um say thank you to our Nordic um track uh team out doing cross-country and utilizing this great golf course and in a secondary means when the snow is uh the snow is on the ground, on the ground. I also want to say thank you to the streets team, and also I understand uh Mayor in a conversation you and I had that um you'd be interested in saying thank you to them individually, along with the Commissioners, I'm sure um by bringing by a thank you to them, so that I'll will help make sure that that happens for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The um last week, oftentimes our police and firefighters are responding in uh supporting all of us in our most dire situations. Last week, there were several of our citizens who were administered Narcan in their crisis situations, and I really want to say thank you to all of our police and firefighters who help support these citizens in this crisis moment. Oftentimes, those crisis moments are the moments when, in fact, uh things come to light, and one of those um for me in the last several months was the realization of how important it is for us to really focus in on for me and for the uh community. I think it reflects clearly the desire of uh you all, as well the safety of our roads and streets, and I will be doing my best in every public meeting to provide a fun fact for all of you about the importance of driver safety and mobility access for those who need uh need access through our community. First, I want to say that whenever there is a school zone, fifteen miles an hour, it's not twenty, not twenty-five, it's fifteen. Uh, other fun facts, uh, stop means stop, it's not yield. Law across the United States, we're not alone in seeing some really interesting driver behavior, and now law is being cited as being related to COVID. So as a reminder, it's not yield and stop. Also, uh, please consider the pedestrian who always has the right-of-way, and a two-ton car might have more impact than the pedestrian is maybe aware of, so always be slower in those areas where you know kiddos might be, might be located. And last, in areas where we have uh mobility, really anybody who's mobility impaired could even be someone who has a broken leg. So please be considerate of your neighbors and your community and remove this near your homes so that we have access through for those who are mobility impaired. Thank you, Mayor. For that opportunity to provide an update, I have no further update.
Thank you. Communications from Helena Citizens Council, Representative, H C C Representative Dylan Clapmire. You have the floor, Dylan.
Thank you, Mayor Collins and Commissioners. This is Dylan Clapmire, the Helena Citizens Council Chairman. Um, on behalf of the H C C, I want to welcome my uh Commissioners Reed uh and Fever to the uh to the commission. We look forward to working with both of you and having you attend some of our meetings this year. Uh, the only new update I have is that the first um H C C meeting of twenty twenty-two is this Wednesday at seven o'clock at the uh Helena Civic Center and also through Zoom for those that want to participate through Zoom. Um, we appreciate Mayor Collins coming to do the swearing-in of our newly-elected members at that meeting, and then we'll elect new executive officers. Um, after those new executive officers are elected, I will be sure and reach out to the city manager and city clerk um to introduce uh the new H C C executive officers to all of you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan. Regular items. Consider first passage of an ordinance eliminating the approval of personnel policies by the City Commission by amending section two dash one dash three of the Helena Citizen Code by amending section two dash one dash three of the Helena Citizen Code and set a public hearing date for February fourteen, two thousand and twenty-two.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, I think, given what we have on the agenda tonight and the need for some additional discussion and information, um, I would like to move for us to table um, the consideration of an amendment um, or to consideration of first passion, passage of an ordinance eliminating the approval of personnel policies by the City Commission by amending section two, one, three of the Helena City Code. I think we can have an opportunity to bring this back to us later on, and we have some more time to actually dig into it.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Do we have any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Excuse me. Commissioner Dean. Commissioner Fever.
Yes.
Commissioner Logan.
Hi.
Commissioner Reed.
Hi.
Mayor Collins.
Hi.
The motion to table carries five to zero.
Thank you. Public hearings, twelve A. Consider an ordinance pre-zoning property described as Track A on the Certificate of Survey identified as document number three, three, six, zero, eight, five, eight, and all of Block four, five, six, and seven of the Highland Park subdivision, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, as R two residential and R three residential. Manager Hollis Shaw, Director Haugen, and Planner McConnell. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, before we can begin, we missed Thomas, uh, City Attorney Joden providing an overview as to why the change in the agenda. You could also share also the consequence of not revising it at the same time as the reasoning for the revision on Friday night. That would be helpful. And when done, Thomas, uh, Director Joden, if you would please turn it back to me so I can do a quick summary of uh, this item and uh, the Commission's meeting, then we'll go to Director Haugen and Planner McConnell.
Sure, Mayor Collins, I'd actually like Eric Coat to speak to that, please.
Thank you. Mr. Coat, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as you will notice, we have moved the annexation to now be item twelve C. At the hearing in November, or sorry, at the meeting in November, we considered the annexation first of all of the subdivision items or subdivision-related items. The reason we moved it to C for tonight's agenda is so we could have a joint hearing on the annexation and the subdivision. And the reason we did that is because seventy-six, three, six, oh, five, two of the Montana Code annotated says that when a proposed subdivision is also proposed to be annexed to a municipality, the governing body of the municipality shall hold joint hearings on the subdivision application and annexation whenever possible. And we believe that it is possible to have a joint hearing or joint hearings this evening, and it was a matter that we overlooked uh, for the November twenty-second uh, City Commission meeting. So, that's the reason for the change, and uh, we want to make sure that we uh, are in compliance with that provision in the Montana Code.
Thank you.
Deputy City Attorney Coat, what's the consequence of not revising the agenda?
Well, with most of these um, subdivision-related items, if it's reviewed by a court, the court is going to review it under an arbitrary and capricious standard, as well as an unlawful standard. And the unlawful standard basically says, hey, did the city comply with the statutes and the ordinances that are applicable?
Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Fever.
Well, you can color me confused. I'm not sure how we can move on variances as requested without effectively saying we're going to decide on the, the annexation after the fact. And so, we almost set ourselves up to have to annex, even if we decide uh, those variances, you know, I think that boxes the Commission's decision-making into a corner. So, uh, that may be what the statutes require, but it does seem to compel annexation if we go with Parts A and B right off the bat, and then we get to C.
No, and I should have read, uh, I should have read, there was a change in that, and that's what uh, Attorney Coats was making clear.
Well, I, I think I, I got the change myself, and
Okay, so.
If, you know, item C on the, if the third item down, the third motion to be made in this issue is annexation, but we've already worked on A and B, and we accept them or we reject them. I mean, it then gets to C, and I I think that's a kind of a troubling, uh, you know, circumstance. It makes me scratch my head a bit. So, I just, maybe I'll just wait a minute here for somebody to explain that to me better.
Madam Hollis Shaw, you have the floor to continue.
Thank you, Mayor. As uh, I think what I heard was that Deputy Attorney Coat shared. The opportunity is far easier for the city to be held in an arbitrary and capricious situation in front of a judge as a result of the placement of annexation uh, above public hearings and previously, as it had been done uh, in the November meeting. And as a result, they moved the uh, the items down into the public hearings to be in compliance first with, I understand, MCA, state MCA, and then additionally, the city's ordinance. I want to remind everyone that the state of Montana sets the subdivision process. The City of Helena must respond to that process. So, must being the key factor here. It's not a, a home rule state. We are in a shared state, shared rule state. That means the state of Montana sets the subdivision process, and they also set the MCA related to the annexation. So, if Thomas, our uh, City Attorney Joden, or City Deputy City Attorney Coat, want to add any further detail on uh, why the, whether or not A and B actually corner the City Commission into annexation, that would be very helpful.
Mayor Collins, Commissioner Fever, I, I don't believe that the consideration of A, the pre-zoning of the property, or B, the variance, uh, lock the city into approving or denying annexation or subdivision. There, there are different criteria that you're looking at, and our code requires uh, subdivision variances to be considered before the subdivision. And that's, and because annexation has to be considered with the subdivision, we moved very, we moved annexation down to be uh, concurrent with the subdivision, and thus after the variances.
So, if we approve A and we approve B and deny C, that's perfectly okay.
It is. It, it's so long as we follow the, the um, the criteria with respect to subdivision review and the city's best interest uh, in determining whether to annex or not. That's correct.
And I, I don't want to be, you know, too dense here, but we could deny A and B and approve C, and that would be okay, too.
So, approve A and deny.
No, prove A and B, and then we get to C, and we decide not to annex, even though we've approved.
That's correct.
All right.
Mayor, Commissioner.
Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, if I might just ask a question of the City Attorney, is it possible to have a a condition of the variance request be annexation, and or have that as a condition of the approval? Is that an option that we could consider?
Uh, Mayor Collins, Commissioner Reed, I, I'm not sure that it's necessary. If the variance is approved, but the annexation and/or subdivision is denied, the variance will apply.
Thank you.
Manager Hollis Shaw, are you?
Thank you. Yes, just quickly, the subdivision, just as a reminder, going into this next piece, I'm going to turn it over to Sharon, our Director Haugen and uh, Planner, Planner Two, Michael McConnell. The subdivision process is a process that the city must respond to as set by the state of Montana. There are specific elements that must be completed, and those are called the, commonly called the six oh eight criteria. Variances from those and requests within those have a particular and specific method, and are required, you all are required to receive particular data sets and information from the city evaluating, the city staff evaluating compliance with our set response to the state's requirements of subdivision. That is the reasoning that you will see, the determinations and recommendations of the staff in alignment. We believe in those cases where the city is in compliance with either a variance or with the subdivision itself, also as well with an annex. The consideration of facts that are required are both analyzed and studied by our staff. The expectation of all of the team members that they bring before you is that they bring before you something that's been completely evaluated to ensure the, the reduce and reduce the risk of the city. Um, hence the movement of the agenda to reduce the risk onto the city, and the same here. Um, most importantly, meeting the expectations of the law. So, Sharon, it will, um, Director Haugen and uh, Michael McConnell, our Planner Two, will provide a presentation to you on Items A and on Item A, and it will be in specific areas. Those specific areas, again, will be in assurance of compliance with state law. Then, uh, as I understand it, the um applicant will have an opportunity to provide an update or provide a presentation, and then comments and questions from the community. So, just want to make sure that you have an opportunity to hear and know the process is outlined. Um, is one that we are not in control of. So, Director Haugen, I'm turning it over to you.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, um, Michael McConnell from my staff will be taking you through the bases tonight. As the City Manager indicated, state law sets different criteria by which you'll analyze each of the upcoming actions. And with that, I'll, I'm, if with your permission, I'll turn it over to Ms. McConnell, and he and I will be available for any questions that the Commission may have.
Mr. Mayor, just really quickly.
Commissioner Dean.
Um, just a logistics question, Sharon, or the way I understand it, we are going to have a presentation for each of these four items separately, correct?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Dean, excuse me, we will be giving a presentation on the pre-zoning and then a presentation on the variances, but the annexation and subdivision will be a joint presentation.
Right.
But you'll be required to take separate actions on both the annexation and subdivision.
Okay.
I hope that answered your question.
It did. Thank you.
You have the floor, Mr. McConnell.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you very much. As the manager and Sharon both said, uh, this is a, now a four-part process. This is the pre-zone section of, of my presentation tonight. Um, and staff will be available after each one to answer any questions that the Commission, Commission might have as a result. So, this subject property is approximately sixty acres in size, and is about six hundred feet west of the Hauser Boulevard and Grand Avenue intersection. You can see here a somewhat crude map uh, on the west side of Helena, showing the general location um, of this subject property. The property is currently in the county uh, in its own urban residential mixed use. Um, this is a zone district that does not have any, uh, any use or dimensional standards associated with this time, although I believe they're forthcoming by the county. To, to the north, um, is annexed.
Would you speak up, please, Mr. McConnell?
Apologies, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. Thank you.
To the north, um, is annexed city land. It's a, it's a mix of R two residential, R three residential, and RO, which is a residential office for a multifamily zone. Um, there is another zone district in the county that borders this property. It's a citizen-initiated zone district that is uh, primarily residential, um, zone district allowing only single-family homes, uh, their accessory uses, um, and both public and private institutional uses as well. Uh, this property is outside of the Fort Harrison zoning district, uh, but within the one-mile military-affected area. Uh, the property, property is currently vacant, uh, with several, um, social trails running through it. Uh, the zoning commission has heard this item at their October fifth meeting, and they did vote three, zero, to recommend denial um, of this zoning proposal to the City Commission. Uh, the recommendation of staff at that meeting was to uh, recommend approval, and this is reflected in the um, submitted staff report. So, the applicant is proposing both R two and R three zoning districts. Uh, both are primarily residential in nature, with R two um, skewing towards a, a low to moderate density development pattern, and R three uh, which does allow both single-family and duplex residential structures, um, as well as um, higher-density multifamily, all of which by rights. Um, R three does also allow some commercial uses, although typically, um, they are going to require a conditional use permit. Uh, you can see from the map here, this is a zoning um, exhibit that was submitted with the application. Um, you can see that the R two areas are shown in yellow and comprise the, the vast majority of the, of the property. The R three areas are shown in orange, um, directly adjacent to Hauser Boulevard, um, at the end of Livizy Court, and also at the end of Flowery Court. These are the review criteria, uh, which are individually represented in the staff report. I'm not going to read them individually, uh, but it will be important to keep them in mind, um, as we go through the presentation and um, any, any question and answer period that follows. Um, in general, about evaluation of these criteria attempt to ensure um, safe development systems uh, that properly facilitate service provision, um, and minimize incompatible landing patterns. This slide will also be evaluated at the end of the presentation for your reference. So, once annexed, the property will be subject to a variety of codes and plans that the city has adopted uh, to ensure efficient provision of services and safe structures that are, uh, at the same time built to a high standard. Uh, the property will also receive all city services available to it, uh, including water, wastewater, and solid waste services. So, based on the zone districts proposed and the allowable uses, uh, within them, there is the potential for upwards of twenty-eight hundred uh, new vehicle trips per day from this development. Um, and this is based on uh, common utilizations for property that are zone R two and R three in the community. Uh, the Community Development Department uses a traffic generation model that, that presupposes a number of uses and densities on-site. Um, and these, these assumptions are based on examples throughout the community of properties, uh, that are zoned in a similar way. For R two, we assume that twenty-five percent of the land area, uh, will have duplex development, and seventy-five percent will have single-family homes built on it. Uh, for the R three zone properties, um, there's a bit wider range of uses allowed, so staff assumes that thirty percent of the property will be built, will be multifamily, forty percent will be duplex development, and thirty percent uh, will be utilized as single-family homes. Uh, and these distributions account for the uses allowed in some districts, uh, in common use patterns a- across the city. Uh, we use this model because zoning, uh, filling in and of itself does not place conditions or specific restrictions for development on the properties in question. Uh, the applicant could potentially sell some of the, these lots, and the new owner would be, would be able to build anything that that particular zone district, uh, would allow. So, uh, non-motorized transport is, is also taken into account through these review criteria. The applicant is proposing a significant internal trail network um, connecting to sidewalks and trail to the development and uh, to external networks. Um, as part of the annexation implemented. As part of the annexation and preliminary plat, there will be a, a number of unimproved county roads that are being constructed to complete streets standards for the engineering standards. And this will greatly expand pedestrian connectivity in the area. But based on this evaluation, there, there will be a significant influx of new traffic to this neighborhood. So the, the dominant land use in the area is single-family homes. And the proposed zone districts support that use as well as some of the other residential land uses in the immediate vicinity. Both condos and multifamily rental housing are located immediately to the north in Overlook Estates. And the development patterns of this nature are, are supported by the growth policy. And I mean, much of the, much of the existing single-family homes are lots that are larger than what is being proposed. There, there are, there are a certain amount of similarities for sure. A, a large, a large amount of the multifamily structures, as you can see in the zoning map on the left here, are located adjacent to Highway 12, potentially lessening their impact on the wider neighborhood. On the other map represents the, it's a map from the growth policy, it's the existing land use map. And the orange color represents urban density residential land uses as they exist today. And you'll notice that some of those are, are located in the county currently, but we still classify them as suburban. So the growth policy identifies this area as one where it is appropriate to grow at urban scales. Both R2 and R3 zone districts potentially support this outcome. The property is within the urban standards boundary facilitating connection to city services like water and wastewater as well as both the motorized and non-motorized transportation networks. This zoning proposal also meets several growth policy goals and objectives, mainly those for the provision of housing and efficient infrastructure use and development. Like I said, this item did go to the zoning commission meeting on the 5th of October where they did vote to recommend denial 3-0. The discussion as it relates to that meeting, they cited traffic as, as the major reason for their decision. They felt the high volume of new traffic generated was too much for the existing transportation network to handle. Important note that as part of the annexation and subdivision processes, many of those roads will be, will be upgraded to city standard. Further discussion by the zoning commission suggested that the overall number of lots was concerning. They discussed the current configuration of the zone districts and said that maybe having the R3 zone property directly adjacent to the existing homeowners was maybe not fair to those, those long-term residents. Lack of access to Highway 12 as it related to the overall traffic situation was also discussed as a reason for recommending denial. And each of the commissioners did reference their support for increasing densities in the city, but felt that this proposal was possibly a bit too dense for this location with its limited transportation options. There hasn't been a significant amount of public comments. Excuse me. As of, as of yesterday, there's been over 190 comments in opposition to, to this development. And these are the reasons they cited density, traffic, pedestrian safety and service capacity potentially. All the comments were lumped into one, as most of them did not reference a specific portion of, of the project. They just said, this project, I'm against this project. Lately though, there's been a large influx of, of support for this, most often citing the provision of housing, job growths, and the applicant did submit a petition digitally signed by, I believe it was 331, that final count, individuals that expressed support for the project for, for various reasons. So these were the engagement methods, methods that were used. We have the submitted materials posted on our website. We included all of the, all the items in certified letters, post signs on the property and put an ad in the IR notifying the public of this meeting, encouraging them to attend. So again, this, this is the review criteria that should be considered tonight as they relate to the pre-zone portion of this project. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, that's all I have for my presentation tonight regarding the pre-zone, but I and a number of city staff are available to answer any questions at my IRs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell.
Mayor, if I may, just before, just want to remind the commission that Mr. McConnell has provided the conditions under which zoning can be approved and must be followed within the state's requirements. Those criteria for zoning require that we evaluate the appropriateness of the zoning in compliance with state rule. The impacts on transportation services and public health and safety cannot be beyond what is addressed by the zoning. So just to remind that commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. At this time, we'll have commission discussion. Commissioner Reed.
Apologies, Mr. Mayor. I had a little hiccup in my connection. I was not sure if it was time to speak. Thank you. Mr. Mayor and Mr. McConnell, I think this question is for you. The zoning commission, are they bound by the same review criteria as the commission is?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Reed, yes, this is, this is the same review criteria that was presented in, or presented at that meeting. The staff report was written in response to that meeting, so that is what was presented, yes.
Mr. Mayor, if I might just to follow up question?
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I briefly noted the three to four criteria under which the zoning commission recommended denial, and I'm having a hard time matching them to the review criteria. Was that exercise undertaken? I, I think the traffic one, I, I think I can see some of the other ones, like the zoning and the density and proximity to other houses. Was there a correlation made between their recommendations and their review criteria?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Reed, a correlation made by the zoning commissioners?
Yes.
Apologies, Attorney Cora Jordan, is that a, I, I believe that's in, sorry, Ms. Reed, that's in the, the discussion was in the minutes. I have not reviewed the minutes in, in a good bit, but it was, it's my, the best of my recollection that they stated their reasonings as they related to the criteria.
Director Haugen, do you want to try to add to the response from Mr. McConnell?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Reed, in addition to what Mr. Kyle stated, the density of the area was indirectly looked at in terms of the character of the district and the values and the appropriate use and compatible urban growth. So those are generally, they, they didn't directly discuss those, but that is, was generally how the discussion related to the criteria. I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Yes, thank you, Director Haugen, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a question for Mr. McConnell. Do you, it was helpful that you noted that, you know, an applicant could build any of the structures that is allowed by whatever zoning district that is, but do you know what the breakdown is of the type of structures that are in the R3 of, of overlook or adjacent to overlook?
Um, I don't know the exact breakdown, but I can go back to the, the slide that had the, the zone district map on it, if that would be helpful. And that'll give you a pretty guy, pretty good idea of what is allowed where in the immediate area.
Okay, thanks.
So here you see Overlook Boulevard, RO and the R3 are going to be where your multifamily uses, condos or rentals are located. And R2, I believe, is mainly single-family homes.
Thank you.
Do you, do, do you have any other comments from the commission? Commissioner Logan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for staff. Improvements that deal with some of the roadways in the area, well, let me back up. Can you briefly describe the sort of technical difference between the major and minor collector and what that means to the area?
Can I ask a clarifying question? Commissioner Logan, I, and perhaps this goes along with Director Haugen and Planner, Planner to McConnell. How do those factor into the zoning analysis that you all do?
Sure.
Thank you.
Commissioner Logan, did you ask your question?
Well, let me try again. So perhaps just describe what a ma, what it means to be a major collector and a minor collector. Those two terms were used in this presentation, so if you could help me out with that, sort of the technical difference between those two.
Sure, I believe David Knopf is, is on as well and he can really get down to the specifics. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, David Knopf can answer that.
I'm sorry, Mr. McConnell, is it possible to turn your volume up? You're very soft. I apologize, but if you can turn it up, we appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Commissioners.
Yes.
The primary difference between a major and a minor collector is on a major collector, bike lanes are provided. Otherwise, the road widths and features are pretty much the same per the engineering standards. Another little piece of information, major and minor collectors, a minor collector typically carries 1,500 to 3,500 vehicle trips per day and a major collector, as outlined in the standard, can carry upwards of 35,000 to 5,000 vehicles a day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from the commission? I just want to get some clarification, Mr. McConnell. I hear, I see there that the zoning commission voted no and the staff voted for approval. Am I correct?
Mayor, if I may first, the, the team do not.
They recommended, that's what I meant.
Right, recommendation is not the best term in this scenario in that we're required to assure compliance with the zoning as opposed to recommend. So when we say recommending, it's not that the staff are in, in opposition of the zoning decision. We believe that the information is provided, is in compliance with the zoning requirements of the city, the state. So that is the expectation when we bring these before you. Just wanted to clarify that it's not the opposition, it's not a contentious place from.
I didn't, I didn't take it to mean that we, Madam Manager, all I was trying to figure out was if you stating that the, the met requirements, zoning requirements as outlined by the state, I'm confused as to why the zoning commission didn't see that or do we have any member of the zoning commission on? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I do not see any names in the attendees at this stage that would be representatives.
Okay.
Sorry, Commissioner.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? At this time, we're open for public comments. And Clerk, do we have any raised hands for this topic? Go ahead, Ron and Sussex.
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to speak. So I'm gonna go ahead and put on a brief presentation here in a second, if you don't mind. Commissioners, because as I noticed, as you were all struggling with, there's so many parts to this, it's hard to review one portion without understanding some of these other questions like transportation, like some of the illness of the development. So I'm gonna briefly go over some of those. But specific to the zoning, I'll get into these conversations, but let me just give you a really brief overview of the project. So this is West Side Woods. Um, as a, as Michael had already said, this is on the west side of Helena. It encompasses just under 60 acres. The reason that we acquired this property was specifically, it was outlined in the growth policy that this was land that was destined or identified for height, high to medium density. It was, and therefore that was part of the reason that we originally purchased this property or interested in it is because it was specifically outlined in the growth policy. So let me go and I'll show you a few things about, so the growth policy itself, as you notice, the portions that are in orange, those are the areas that were identified. The growth policy, city-county growth policy has identified very few locations in and around the Helena area that have identified for growth. And that again was the reason that we specifically approached this property. When are the, so in looking at, you know, when looking at the question as far as the zoning, we have to look a little bit about annexing, why would this become part of the city or why would they stay in the county? So I'm just gonna talk about that a little bit. So in the city, the, the reason we approached the city was, first of all, it has identified as a growth policy, but most specifically, it actually provides for a higher standard. It provides for complete streets, sidewalks, curb gutter, paved streets, stormwater and wastewater conveyance. Those elements all lead, in my opinion, in our opinion, to a better product for our citizens of Helena. As well, there's a, obviously a tax benefit where these properties are part of the city of Helena. There's a pretty large benefit for those taxpayers that would be there. It also specifically aligns with the city's westward annexation. Cities spent a lot of time and effort, and I think some of the commissioners were part of this, in actually including a good chunk of the west side of Helena that was county and that has, is now been included in the city of Helena. So it was also in line with that. Main development, main cons of not bringing this to the city, it'd be further developing with wells and sepo. We have this situation happening in the Helena Valley. Obviously, we've all been reading newspapers, there's a lot of conflict that's occurring there. In addition.
Excuse me, is your screen supposed to be moving forward, progressing?
Oh, it's supposed to be, is it not?
Well, it's not. It's stuck on West Side Woods.
Oh, shoot, just a second. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Here, we're sharing the screen. Here, I think I have to, do I have to drag it over?
No, can read all your email.
There, take this whole screen over here. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, just a second. Can you just drag it over here? Can I do it? Can I do it? I'm so sorry. We're trying to figure this out. Derek, can I just drop it over there? Let me drag it all screen. We're having a little technical difficulties there. Here, Rebecca, can you try to figure that out while I talk along with you? I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. We should be more tech savvy. Let me exit out of this one. There's that now sharing. Am I muted?
We did have it, but now it's gone away.
Is that okay?
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay, here now. Okay, let me explain the screen and I'm so sorry about that. Okay, can you see it now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, can, let me see if it changes the screen. Does it change the screen?
Did you, well, it's changed from west side to future land use.
Then does this say CD annexation? Okay, I'm gonna stay over here then. It's not doing this. So let me escape out of there. All right, you can see that, right?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I'll start really quickly. So this is basically property. Here's the map that shows where the teacher land use would be. I'll get caught up, sorry. These are the pros of annexation, which I just explained. These are the cons, is that it'd be, if it's developed in the county, it'd be more wells and seppants. It also would add to our urban sprawl. It would also be lower infrastructure standards. And it creates more strain on city services without taxpayer support, taxpayer support. And that's a big one. That's the more houses we add to the county, as we know, it affects our city. So that's the reason why we are bringing it forward in this city. It's also, is part of the urban design designation. So the growth plan specifically has, has outlined that this property should be moderate to high density development. So that brings me to zoning. So the most important thing I would say is that if you look around this area, we didn't just pick this zoning, this R two and R three. The reason that we were specifically keyed on that versus R O or versus a P L one is we wanted this property to be more in line with what's around it. All of the properties essentially that are to the west of this, including the portion that's in white, those are much higher density lots. In other words, many, many years ago, these lots were created and roughly they're in a configuration of fifty feet by a hundred and thirty feet. Now, albeit, many houses over the years were built over the top of those lines. But that is the density that was originally overlaid over this entire area to the west. To the north is much higher densities, about two and a half times more dense than what we proposed. We did that because we feel this is more in line with what the land, some of the constraints in the land, as well as with being aligned with the neighborhood. This is a plat map of that same area that shows all of these lots here that are immediate to the west. All of the, I'm sorry, immediately to the east. All of this area, these, this is how this is currently divided. So what we're proposing, the smallest lot that we have is our lots are basically two to six times larger than the lots that are currently planted to the east. It's really important to, and this is Commissioners, you had mentioned this quite a bit. When we brought this, this plan forward to the city staff, we were very careful to make certain that it met the standards for the zoning. And that's part of the reason why you have a recommendation from the city staff for approval, because it is in alignment with what the goals were set out in the growth plan, as well as, and it's supportive of those goals. Unfortunately, during our zoning meeting, we got hung up on some other things that were not in that scope. Traffic was the biggest element of that. So why this zoning? So it's this density supports housing. One of the things that we decided, and as you Commissioners, or the Commissioners before you decided as you keep annexing other park properties on the west side of Helena, was that cities need houses, or that's part of what cities are, is that they offer places for, for houses and density is part of an equation. This density, it also supports affordability, having different kinds of housing. If all of these are just big, big lots, then lots will be very expensive and it only promotes one kind of house, housing. Having different types of housing options, condominiums, single family offers different types of affordability. Appropriate for the existing neighborhood, as I explained earlier in the slide, and it's balanced. This is a balanced approach. As we explained, or as the zoning would, would allow, you would be coming forward with a plan that's four hundred units or something like that. So quite a bit denser than what we are coming forward. And this is, we believe this is responsible. It's bringing housing more into our cities as opposed to out in our counties. It fits the Helena growth plan, and that's the big, that's the big one. So what I'm going to do is is I'm gonna turn this over to Jeremy, to Jeremy Fadness with W W C. Because in our last conversation, when we got into zoning, it entirely centered around traffic. And it concerns with safety and it concerns with how people are gonna get here and from. I realize that that's not part of zoning, but I'm gonna have Jeremy, if you would, Jeremy, jump on these and talk a little bit about traffic. That's all right. And we'd still like to share our screen, please. So if you could, please let Jeremy come on.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Appreciate your time tonight. Again, we're, we're trying, we're, we really appreciate your time in reviewing all these matters. First off, I'd like to also congratulate Sharon on a wonderful career. I started as an engineer in Helena in two thousand and five with the Mountain View Meadows Project. And I've been working with her on all sorts of stuff over the years, and she's done an excellent job for the city. And the next Planning Director has a lot, some big shoes to fill. So congratulations to her and she will be missed. Also, I'd like the city staff in, in the engineering department and planning staff, Michael McConnell and everyone up at city, they, we've, they've done an excellent job with this review of this development. And then, so I, I guess the traffic, W W C Engineering and Bob Abelin prepared the traffic impact study for this development. Bob Abelin is also on the call tonight, and I guess one thing I'd like to do is turn it over to Bob Abelin just really quick. So that he can kind of tell you what, give you a sense of who he is and what his qualifications are. And then I just want to hit a few quick points on traffic. And then we'll, we'll talk about more about traffic when we go into, obviously, the subdivision and annexation stuff. And so I don't, I won't spend a lot of time on it with the zoning, but Bob, can you chime in for a second?
Oh, yes, I'm here, Jeremy. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, yeah, thanks, Jeremy. And Mr. Mayor Commissioners, my name is Bob Abelin. I am the owner operator of Abelin Traffic Services based here out of Helena. I've been doing traffic impact studies locally and around the states, kind of regionally for about twenty years now. So this is kind of my, kind of my specialty is the transportation planning portion of civil engineering. I'm currently a registered professional engineer in the state of, or state of Montana and a professional transportation operations engineer. I had to, had to look it up today because I was curious when Jeremy was asking. And I counted over five hundred projects that I've done. Traffic impact studies, just like, just like the one we are working on here over the last twenty years here in the area. Locally, I've worked on quite a few different projects, the, some of the projects of note that I've worked with, with Jeremy and variety of other engineers within the community. Did all the traffic work for the Mountain View Meadows Project, the Remington Apartments off of McHugh, a variety of the developments that have occurred around the customer interchange. I've actually worked quite a few times with the city of Helena on a different studies, speed, speed studies and road reviews for different sections of town. And also variety of projects with Lewis and Clark County for the same kinds of things. Looking at traffic data and traffic operations. So I have a fair amount of expertise in the field of traffic, and I think we're gonna be talking about that quite a bit tonight. But I think that's all I wanted to put forward right now, and I'll give it back to Jeremy for some more general discussions about traffic.
Thanks, Bob. So I guess just briefly, so W W C Engineering and Bob Abelin prepared the traffic impact study for this development. That was submitted to the city of Helena with the original subdivision application. The city staff, including your, your transportation engineers, reviewed that traffic impact study. We did respond to some comments with, from them over the course of their review and, and provided updates. And as part of that, also, once we got past their review and into the public process, you know, city staff actually use their, their own traffic generation numbers based on zoning, as Michael McConnell indicated in his presentation, which actually doubles the amount of traffic that we presented in our traffic impact study. And their conditions of approval are based on those, those numbers that were generated from the, from the city's traffic numbers based on zoning. Also, there's been some questions about access to Highway twelve. M D T, and we'll get into this again too with the annexation discussion, but M D T's been contacted several times and met with. And they are, they have been adamant that they won't allow an access on Highway twelve at the northwest corner. And then finally, I think there's just been some, some, some talk about traffic, traffic, the, the amount of traffic and safety with that traffic. And more traffic does not necessarily mean less safe roadways. Complete streets actually equal more safe roadways. There's lots of areas in the city of Helena that you can point to that have lots of traffic on them, and they are perfectly safe areas for, you know, all over the city. And that's because they're provided with complete streets. And the city's staff's recommended conditions of approval recommend the construction of complete streets offsite from this development, including Hauser Park, Flowery and Granite Street to, to provide full width roadways, boulevard sidewalks, boulevards and sidewalks, to provide those safe routes for pedestrians, bicyclists, parking, all those uses that are, that are needed within those, those corridors and provide those safely. Further, conditions of approval at Castler School, we are also going to be required to put in bulb outs to slow down traffic, flashing crosswalk signs at, at the Overlook Boulevard entrance onto Granite Street right across from the school, as well as light that intersection so that it's lit up at night and a flashing speed limit sign at, at the, as you're coming down Granite Avenue and you come into that school zone. There's gonna be a flashing speed limit sign. So those are just some of the improvements that we'll get into more with the subdivision application and annexation review. And then also, as you can see on here, some of the other comments have been, well, Granite Street's the only place to get out of this area. And as you can see from this map, there's lots of areas in which you can get out of this area to the west of this development. Utilizing Howar, How, excuse me, Hauser Boulevard to the east, to the east, you can access plenty of locations on Highway twelve where there are already existing traffic signals. And Hauser actually always goes all the way into downtown also, I believe. So with that, I think I'll turn it back over to Ron. Yeah, I think we, we hit all those around. So I think, back to you.
All right, thank you very much. I'll proceed here quickly on the rest of these points. So you know, that, that's, you're asking about what happened in our, in our zoning. That's what happened. Is we were, we're here to talk about, you know, zoning and why it's applicable, and we talked about traffic. And so we didn't have all that information. So that's why we are trying to present some of that to you right now. I'm gonna show you just a little bit more though about the rest of the developments, just so you have an idea. So West Side Woods, I think it's important for you to see what this community is that we're proposing. So everything that you can see in this darker color here, this is where we're proposing it to be multifamily. Or sorry, single family. This landmass here, these lots would be quite a bit bigger. Like I said, anywhere from two to six times larger than the lots that are currently directly to the east. We specifically did that because as you can even see some of those lots to the east, people have built over some of those lot lines. So we wanted to again have some larger lots. But in addition to that, on the condo lots that you can see, we're looking for having different types of, of housing options. Because those options lead to more affordability. As far as density goes though, they're the same density, in fact, a little bit less dense than these other single family. It's just a different housing type. And then we have some multifamily. The other area that you can see around this perimeter is we've, we've taken a quarter of the land mass roughly and I put it into open space. And in that open space gives us an opportunity to provide some trails, some other amenities that I'll talk about later on. But then instead of unlike a lot of other developed lots in the city of Helena, all of it's developed. Not, not a quarter of it being set aside. So those are some of the amenities, and there's reasons why we did that. We, we are really believe in the connectivity through our pedestrians, through the community, as well as into our very large park system. It's also worth noting, the reason that we, all the improvements on the offsite improvements, they're better than what we have today. We're adding sidewalks, which we currently don't have. So all those kids that walk on the side right now currently walk on the street. So it will improve the safety, which is a big component. You know, we believe that this, the, when we started putting this together, in this process, these are all the people that we've and, and groups and partners we've worked with in this process. There's a lot of moving pieces, and it's really easy anecdotal to say, hey, what if you do this or what if you do that? But there's, in order to meet this, in order to meet the goals that we put forward, that we wanted to include all of these folks in that discussion. And that's why you have a recommendation of approval of this entire project from the city staff, because we've worked very hard to try to make that it meets this, the intent and the standards of the city. With that, it's a very brief overview, and I know you have a lot of questions, so I would, I would leave it at that. And specifically to zoning, you know, if there's anything specific, but I would just end in, we do meet all the requirements that, that Michael had put up here regarding zoning. And that's the reason that we have this plan in front of you. Otherwise, we would have changed it before it ever got to you. So thank you very much, Commissioners. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ron. At this time, we will entertain public comments. Madam Clerk, would you check to see if we have any raised hands? And we'll be discussing this topic at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have several hands raised. I know that there are individuals that asked to speak as a group in order, but to go in sequence of the hands raised, I first have a hand raised from someone listed as Helena Habitat. So I'd asked that they please list their full name for the record.
Yes, Jacob Coons, Helena Area Habitat for Humanity. I live at nine forty one Hollins Avenue. Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I'm speaking in favor of the zoning for this property. As many of you know, the average sales price of homes in Helena has now reached four hundred and eleven thousand dollars. And part of that is due to market connection corrections over the last few years. And part of that is due to market connection, uh, corrections over the last few years. Um, in part, the stock of housing, number of, of, of homes that are available to purchase in Helena, in the Helena area, is incredibly low. And that's driving, um, the purchase of homes across the spectrum from the affordable units, um, to the homes that are more market driven. So across the spectrum of, of housing, uh, there is a need. It's not just in affordable housing. If folks can't find a home at those more market rates or the higher rates, they tend to buy what's available. We've also seen the need for, for more development, higher density development that doesn't impact the roads, that creates more access to the fire, that doesn't, um, strain water systems and sink wells and put sewers in the ground and create larger parcels of land where they're not absolutely needed. And so, you know, with Habitat, we're always in favor of density and development that is prudent, that considers all of these elements, recognizing that, you know, the commission here has to balance the needs of, of the community, um, the needs of growth in the community, and that can be a hard balance. Um, we see, uh, development coming to Helena that seeks to look at, at prudent development, creating density, creating multifamily housing, um, different types of housing as a good thing. Um, encourage the, the commission to try to find a way to yes, um, on developments, uh, like these that bring density um, and infrastructure to the city and more housing options. Thank you.
Thank you. And, um, just a reminder for public comments, we will, you know, a lot allocate two minutes for your public comments. Do we have the next one, Madam Clerk?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, next I have, uh, David K. Wilson.
You have to flow, Debbie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Oh, David, yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. This is Kim Wilson. I'm a lawyer with Morrison Sherwood Wilson Diola, representing Save Helena West Side. I'd like to make a few introductory comments and then move on to the pre-zoning. We've submitted several letters, including one today for your review, uh, in particular for the new commissioner's review. We resubmitted our original comments today. All these issues overlap and Save Helena West Side opposes all four motions before you tonight. Um, today you will hear from several members of Save Helena's West Side. They raise a number of substantial concerns with the project as proposed. You'll also hear from our traffic engineer, Joey Stasek, detailing a number of shortcomings with the T I S and traffic issues. Um, addressing annexation, but actually applicable to all your decisions tonight, the Helena Growth Policy cautions to avoid annexation of undeveloped land until all public facilities are adequate to serve the new development. That goal of the growth policy aptly sets the tone for what you'll be hearing a lot of tonight. It's also the reason why Commissioners Logan and O'Laughlin articulated for tabling this proposal back in November. Turning to the zoning, by way of background, seventy-six, two, three, oh, four, under that statute, zoning must be made in accordance with the growth policy. It must be designed to secure safety from fire and other dangers, and it also has to facilitate adequate provision of transportation. Addressing these comments, zoning does not implicate, that the, addressing the comments that zoning doesn't implicate the traffic issues, uh, we disagree and would point you to, uh, that statute. This stat, this proposal does not meet those basic requirements, as you'll be hearing in parts through all the hearings tonight. The zoning commission voted unanimously to recommend denial of the application. In response to Commissioners Reed's question earlier, I do believe that the zoning commission's denial is tied to public health, safety, welfare, and adequate provision of transportation as required in seventy-six, two, three, oh, four. Um, finally, I would point out that the proposal to include part of this in R three, uh, the R three areas on the north end are, create some safety issues, but it's also not consistent with the immediately surrounding area to the north. When overlook went in, the city commission required Knight Street to be zoned R two to allow a buffer between the high-density zoning and the existing buffer. The zoning commission recognized this and cited it as it for one of their reasons for recommending denial of the proposal. Moreover, as our traffic expert has indicated, there are major concerns with traffic and the inadequacy of the original T I S. City staff earlier tonight just acknowledged that there's going to be a significant increase in traffic, and we questioned whether, given these transportation issues, this proposal adequately secures safety from fire. I would finally point out, two of the three highest density parts of the subdivision are at the end of cul-de-sacs. So we urge the commission to adopt the zoning board's recommendation, deny the zoning district application, and as I said, several other members of Save Helena West Side will be speaking as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Madam Clerk?
Next, Mr. Mayor, I have Sarah Perry.
You have to flow, Sarah.
Mr. Mayor, um, Commissioners, I would ask the Ma- Madam Clerk if I could have access to share my screen as we discussed previously.
Ms. Perry, I will have to promote you to a panelist in order to do that, so you just wait a moment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, can you hear me again?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I am back as, as a panelist now to be able to share my screen, but just as a little background first, my name is Sarah Perry. I live at twenty-six thirty-six Woodward Avenue. Um, I was asked by our neighborhood to serve as the president of a group called Save Helena West Side that is a nonprofit representing, um, community members both within our neighborhood and also Kessler families and the wider community, um, in general. Um, and though we were formed out of concerns for safety regarding this particular, um, subdivision proposal. Um, so I'm going to share my screen here. Um, leading up to today, um, just to remind everyone, on November twenty-second, um, twenty twenty-one, this proposal was first heard by the commission and a sixty-day extension was granted, um, at the request of the developer who, um, said he would, in his own words, create solutions that make sense to the concerns that were raised in that meeting. And now here we are, several months later, two months later, and little progress has been made. Um, the proposal is almost exactly the same with just a few additional conditions from the city staff and no changes from the developer's team. While the conditions do show an appreciated improvement with more sidewalks and complete streets, um, moving away from the school, the root of our concerns are safety, um, by Kessler pickup and drop-off and safety related to evacuation in the case of an emergency. And those conditions or those concerns have just not been resolved. Um, let's see. I wanted to remind you of the petition that was signed in Mr. McConnell's, um, presentation. He did a great job of referencing the developer's petition signed by, I think it was three hundred, um, around three hundred community members. But what he failed to mention, or notably failed to mention, was that we also submitted a petition um, that was signed by over three hundred members back in November and another nearly three hundred additional signatures before this meeting. So five hundred and ninety-two community members. Who were those? Those were members of our neighborhood, um, Kessler families and dozens of local medical professionals specializing in emergency care, trauma, and ambulatory services. As our, um, attorney just pointed out, Montana Code, um, says that zoning regulations must be designed to secure safety from fire, promote public health, public safety, the general welfare, and facilitate the adequate provision of transportation. I also want to remind you, um, as talking, it's been talked about how this area was designated in the growth policy as an area, um, for potential development. Commissioner O'Laughlin asked in November, um, if the community development staff had looked into these infrastructure needs that we brought up about, um, lack of adequate ingress and egress, et cetera, um, when they identified this area for potential development. And Mr. McConnell from the Community Development Office answered that no, because the growth policy is a fifty thousand or one thousand foot view. So please keep that in mind as you're being told that this area was tapped for potential development or is being a good location for to pen- potential development. Um, so many of the concerns we're talking about were never even, um, discussed or considered when that designation was made. Also, um, the city of Helena growth policy, um, that Montana Code says must be, um, taken into consideration with, um, zoning regulations. It also mentions needing to protect public health and safety and to maintain those as high priorities. Want to talk a little bit about fires. Um, the, the city staff have reported in their documents to you that this area, um, is moderate fire concern, um, or has moderate wildfire danger, and that's really only part of the story. Um, if we look at this local hazard map from the Tri- Tri-County Regional Community Wildfire Protection Plan, which was put together by the Tri-County Fire Safe Working Group, the local hazard for this area, which the proposed development is noted, um, in the blue arrow, is moderate. However, another form of hazard that's used, um, when looking at land is landscape hazard map. And if you look at the landscape hazard map, this area is listed as being high, um, high risk of fire. So why the discrepancy? Why the difference? Well, the local hazard map, I, I called, so back, sorry, I called Jessica Haas with the U S Forest Service, who did the modeling for these maps, and I spoke extensively with her about the models and, and asked her to help me understand this discrepancy. She described the local hazard map, which was the one that showed it moderate risk, to be what measures backyard fire hazard. So something starting very close to the neighborhood, and it only models the risk for about seven or eight hours of time. The landscape hazard map, which I just showed, has us listed as being high danger. That's the hazard of fire coming from the back country. Remember those thousands of acres of Forest Service? Um, you know, U S and Montana-owned lands to the south and west of this neighborhood, to the south and west of Mount Helena. All of those thousands of acres that are at high and extreme risk of fire, that factors in then to the landscape hazard map, which shows the chances or the risk of fires coming across the whole wire watershed into this neighborhood. Though the reality is, large wildfires burn across many watersheds and would make the risk even higher. This is all information shared by Jessica Haas, who did the actual modeling and is a wildfire expert. Her recommendation, when I spoke with her this afternoon, is that neither model gives a complete picture. Communities need to consider the risks under both scenarios. So again, this is an area under high wildfire risk under many likely scenarios. So what is a likely scenario that might bring a fire? Well, the Unionville simulation on the Helena Fire Department's resources website, um, goes through the simulation of how a wildfire could threaten thousands of home in our community. So they cite that the entire Helena area is considered the wildland urban interface. In other words, Helena is not just a city with lots of trees, most of the area consists of houses in a forest. So they created a simulation based on actual weather reported at the Helena Regional Airport on a recent hot windy day in August, and said what would happen if fires started near Helena under those conditions. They simulated the fire starting four miles from city, city limits, south of Unionville, and under the scenario that the fire started around noon, how does the fire progress? Well, the simulation itself goes into more details, but the gist of it is, within three hours or less, um, the fire could blow up conditions with continuing extreme fire behavior. Um, law enforcement agencies and fire queues, crews would be totally involved with evacuations at that point, and very little, I repeat, very little, if any, successful fire suppression could be accomplished. By four P M, so within four hours or less, the fire would enter Helena city limits. And if you look at this map, it's not just one small neighborhood that's threatened. It's the entire ha- eastern half in this case, because the fire started, um, southeast of Helena. In this case, the entire eastern half of Helena, essentially from downtown to the interstate, are now all under threat. Spot fires, this is when embers are thrown ahead of the fire in the wind. Spot fires would be happening a half mile or more ahead of the fire, with these circles indicating where areas of the town and community and houses would be starting on fire. So we have the same risk on the west side of Helena. I spoke with Rocky Infinger from the, um, fire or the Tri-County Fire Safe Working, um, group. He said that that same scenario, he was part of the simulation group, that same scenario could happen anywhere in Helena. So we could be in that same position of the entire western side of Helena, from downtown out to the proposed development, could be under threat of a fire coming over the ridge, having started in the open lands to the southwest. In that case, this map is one that was shared by the developer's team at the last meeting, and they indicated that, um, Mr. Fadness's words were, it would be unrealistic that our neighborhood would be confined to evacuate out a granite because we have all of these other streets marked to the east of us. However, if this entire neighborhood is evacuating, which is the most likely scenario in a fire of that type, those streets are going to be filled with their own residents, trying to get to Euclid and trying to escape from the fire. Traffic on Euclid is going to be moving slowly as this entire part of the community evacuates, and our neighborhood has no other option but to go down Granite because we have no other streets on our side of town. If we draw this line here, essentially all of the houses, the over three hundred existing homes and now a hundred and seventy proposed homes have one street. So I would argue it is not an unrealistic expectation. This is our reality. This is what we live with. This is our lives that we're talking about. The proposed development has at the south end of the property, so where you see closest to the wildlands, closest to the risk area, it has Flowery Court with sixteen duplexes in high density at the end of an eleven hundred foot dead end. Those homes, if you look at the twenty-foot easement that connects down to Breakman Avenue at the top left of my screen here, that's a twenty-foot easement. You see that that twenty feet is about how far apart those two duplexes are, and some of the other duplexes are even less than that. So we're talking about homes twenty feet or less apart duplexes. If one of those spot fires comes into that neighborhood and one of those duplexes starts on fire, how are you going to stop a domino effect under western winds? This most prevailing winds, likely winds that we're going to see in this area, western or southwestern, how are you going to stop the domino effect? As the fire moves in, talking with both Rocky Infinger, who has over thirty years of firefighting experience in Montana, and Rick Trimbath out of Big Fork with over fifty years of wildfire experience, they said in these types of scenarios, radiant heat increases, ember shower down, and ignition start happening in these homes before the fire even gets to even close to there. So it could be a half mile away, and we're already having fires start here, and they're going from home to home to home, just like what we saw happen in Colorado in December. Then what? There's nothing that can be done to stop the fire at that point. Both Mr. Infinger and Mr. Trimbath, with a combined over ninety years' experience fighting fires, said at that point, there's absolutely nothing that can be done. You wait until the weather cooperates and things slow down. Otherwise, the fire, you are at the mercy of the fire. We've got lots here directly adjacent to Sussex Court at the very south end of this property. These lots, if you look, some of them are only fifty or sixty-some feet wide. Now you put a house on that. How much space are between those houses? Sussex Court, an existing development just to the west of this, if you look at the map here, these houses in Sussex Court are less than a driveway length apart. Our neighborhood already with the construction of Sussex and Mayrowan Court in the early, um, I think it was about ten, fifteen years ago, we already are at greater risk of an urban fire like what was seen in Colorado because of that neighborhood with just a couple dozen houses. Now we're talking about putting another hundred and seventy in that will greatly increase the chance that our neighborhood will turn into an urban fire. In an urban fire, hydrants don't do anything. Hydrants are made for structure fires, one or two homes. In an urban fire, PVC pipes in people's home melt. The water leaks out, and then there's no pressure to draw from for the hydrants. That's exactly what happened in Colorado in December. So how then are you going to protect these homes and these families? The developer mentioned that his lots are bigger and less dense than the surrounding neighborhood. But if you note, these lots that are directly adjacent to Sussex subdivision might be a little longer, but they're also skinnier. They're not much, um, bigger than the Sussex subdivision houses. If we look at this map here, Sussex subdivision, just, um, below Woodward Avenue, those lots are considerably smaller than everything shown, um, above them to the north in the map. And so I disagree. Uh, these houses are going to be much closer, much more dense than anything in the surrounding area to the east. And again, putting the existing homes at even more risk than we already are. Utilities, um, or excuse me, this photo here is from the Bird's Eye Fire that happened, um, just last year, um, or in twenty twenty. Houses might be built out of wildfire-resistant material or out of fire-resistant material, and that helps in a structure fire. However, when we're looking at these wildfires that turn into urban fires, how, windows blow out, and then embers enter the home. And in Colorado, in, um, December, homes burned from the inside out. That's what we're looking at. That's our reality. These pictures here are from the simulation that our own Helena Fire Department has on their website as showing what neighborhoods in Helena could look like. This could be our neighborhood. Spot fires, like in paradise, this map is showing where the fire is coming in from the right side of your screen, and all of those other glowing embers are where spot fires started in the community, creating chaos as people were trying to evacuate with fire on both sides of the road. creating chaos as people were trying to evacuate with fire on both sides of the road. In Wenatchee, Washington, in 2015, the same thing happened. You'll see the main body of the fire on the top of the screen. Down below, across the railroad tracks highlighted in red, is a large area that started as a spot fire well ahead of the lines. This is what their hillside and community looked like. This is not all that different. If you can imagine Mount Helena in the background instead, and the entire west side of Helena in the foreground. Whether it's this particular subdivision proposal or really any proposal that comes before you in the coming years, you need to be keeping in mind these wildfire dangers. We're in a drought. They're increasing in intensity and frequency. This is what our community members are potentially going to be facing. Another thing to keep into consideration. Down the property here on the left side is where you would see the development. But in red, what I have highlighted here is a drainage, a low point. If you've ever walked on the Le Grand Cannon Trail, you've walked across the footbridge. That drainage that goes under the footbridge extends all the way through the existing neighborhood and into the proposed subdivision. In these fires, you get downdrafts, where wind will rush down these low points, and the fire will funnel down it and could potentially cut off. If we go down here, this is the same thing, but on the map with the developers' proposed subdivision. You could be cutting off all of those homes to the left of that red line, and there would be absolutely no way to escape in that case. You can't outrun a fire that's moving at that speed. You would literally be trapping hundreds of people in their homes. Recently, just, when was it, January 5th, KTVH had a program or a piece on how Lewis and Clark County authorities said planning is crucial after the recent devastating fires in Colorado. Rocky Infinger said that they showed just how dangerous it can be when fire conditions are at their worst, and the fires can spread to places you might not expect to be at risk. His exact words were, quote, "It's not that it can't happen here. It's basically when it's going to happen here," end quote. That is our own local Tri-County fire experts' words about our community. So again, I would remind you here. Montana Code says that you must consider all relevant evidence relating to public health, safety, and welfare when making a determination about zoning and the subdivision. The zoning commission or the zoning criteria say that they need to secure safety from fire and other dangers in addition to promoting public health and public safety. Nearly 600 people who signed the petition that we submitted are asking that you please put public safety first as you consider the evidence this evening. Our very lives and the lives of our loved ones may someday depend on it. We ask that you deny the proposed zoning as it does not address these conditions, and the developer did not make any changes to address them since the previous meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I have, I read most of Ms. Perry's email, and it's my understanding that Ms. Perry was speaking on behalf of the West Side group. Ms. Perry, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you have any other comments, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, next I have Joey Stazak.
Go ahead, Joey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Joey Stazak. I'm a senior traffic engineer and associate for Sanderson Stewart located in Bozeman. As noted previously, I was hired by Save Helena West Side to do a professional, independent review of the traffic study for the West Side development. Ms. Perry highlighted that I have summarized my complete review in a letter and submitted it to the Community Development Office back in June and again in October after an updated traffic study was submitted by the applicant. The letter outlines 18 items in the traffic study that were either inaccurate or missing in the analysis and was again submitted prior to this meeting for all of you for review. I wanted to touch on a few things that sparked my concern in my review and reiterate the need for these critical items to be addressed for both this pre-zoning request and later in the public hearing for the subdivision on tonight's agenda. The last time we met on this project, I noted the basis of most analyses in traffic impact studies begin with gathering existing traffic counts to represent an accurate depiction of an existing conditions on both intersections and roadway corridors. There have been four different renditions of traffic counts throughout the applicant's process after several requests from the city. Of the four different count periods with minimum overlaps of counts, there were issues with a 2017 count, assuming half a percent growth per year, when the actual calculated factor was nearly seven times that as recorded from the Montana Department of Transportation. There were counts taken while streets were under construction, counts while school was not in session, and counts without any adjustments due to COVID, which is also readily available by the Montana Department of Transportation. Each rendition brings more and more questions about the validity of the traffic study methodology and conclusions summarized. In the fourth round of the city's requested revisions, the applicant noted to validate all previous traffic counts, but the data summarized paints a different picture. The applicant's own traffic counts show a 20% increase in volumes from 2017 to 2021 on Granite in the morning peak hour right in front of Kessler School, and not the half a percent assumed in their analysis or what was stated similar traffic volumes in the applicant's report. Using these new number, these new counts, I was able to confirm the Euclid-Granite intersection shows failing level of service values in the existing AM peak hour. The signal warrants are met with existing volumes, even with right turn reductions. And these prior analyses or recommendations without mitigation remain without the traffic study amendments revisiting them. One can easily see the accuracy of depicting the existing conditions can be lost in the details on several revisions on revisions that the traffic study from counts from three different years without starting fresh and accurate information. A quick couple examples. The applicant estimated 1,600 vehicles per day on Granite Avenue, which is classified as a major collector. Updating these numbers with the current growth rates, the accurate adjustment factors, school being in session, no construction on the roadways, et cetera, I estimate the existing volumes on Granite could be in the range of 4,000 vehicles per day. Adding in the 1,300 daily West Side trips coming from their traffic study, that puts the future volume on Granite Road above the 5,000 vehicle-per-day maximum threshold, which is noted in the current city of Helena engineering and design standards for a safe and operational roadway. This quick estimate alone should endorse the call to update the traffic study with new counts at all intersections, collected now with school in session, and with amount of growth this area has witnessed the past four years, and is bigger than just requiring more roadway improvements or phased updated analyses. Reviewing the site phasing, the specific roadway connections and travel distances to their final destinations, I would estimate nearly 95% of Phase 1 and Phase 2 site trips and half of Phase 3 would likely access Knight Street. This could put nearly 850 additional vehicle trips, which is about 60% of the total site, on Knight Street, which is a local street, and was not designed or planned to operate as a collector to hundreds of homes. A final note to put this all in the perspective is this is happening all in front of the doorsteps of Kessler School that has already had noted safety problems with pedestrian-vehicle conflicts, limited pickup-drop-off areas, and pedestrian facilities to the adjacent neighborhoods. The applicant's traffic study and subsequent revisions to the traffic study did not address any crash summaries or safety analysis of the school impacts for either existing or future scenarios. In the fourth round of traffic study edits, the applicant's data showed vehicle speeds were collected in excess of 35 miles per hour along Granite during the specific morning school hours, where the speed limit should be 15 miles per hour in their speed zone. So again, the purpose of a traffic study is to provide valuable information to city staff, advisory boards, and to all of you on the commission to help you make an informed decision on the community development, again, based on the health, safety, and welfare of the public user. There's a reason it is required early in the design process as it helps govern zoning, annexation, roadway connectivity, and improvements, et cetera. The city's own traffic engineer, Mr. Young, and the city's transportation systems director, Mr. Kenoki, have both noted concerns with the applicant's traffic analysis and roadway volumes. In my professional capacity, I do not believe the information provided to you from the applicant and the multiple revisions offers the value to make an informed decision and should be revisited before any phase of the development is constructed or approved for pre-zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder, if you're speaking for, against, whatever it is, you'll be allotted no more than two minutes to say what you have to say, because we still have an agenda to complete, and we have to move along with it. Madam Clerk, do we have others?
Mr. Mayor, next, excuse me, I have Derek Hedlin. I apologize if I mispronounced that.
You have the floor, Derek.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm going to keep my comment to two minutes or less. Hello, my name is Derek Hedlin. I was born and raised in Helena, Montana. I'm the owner and president of an electrical contracting company, Green Source Electric, in Helena. I'm a strong proponent for the West Side Wood subdivision. It's not an understatement to say there's a housing crisis happening across our state and country. Many of the people affected by this crisis are the most vulnerable among us: seniors, the disabled, low-income families with children, and veterans. But increasingly, middle-income families are feeling squeezed. Studies from HUD and other sources indicate that more and more families are struggling to pay their mortgage or rent payments. Costs for housing, transportation, medicine, and education keep increasing. This is a time when housing should be a front-burner issue. We seem to be falling farther behind. This is not a reality that any of us should be comfortable with. In fact, it should force us to ask tough questions about our values and priorities for the Helena area. There are numerous factors that contribute to this crisis: aging housing stock, rising rents, low vacancy rates, ridiculous local zoning requirements, high unemployment in areas of poverty. The list goes on and on. We know the crisis spans across Montana and the United States. Both urban and rural areas are suffering from lack of affordable housing. Meanwhile, producing and preserving these homes has become nearly impossible with the costs. Without a major influx of new affordable housing, we won't begin to make a dent in our state affordable housing crisis. Of course, addressing this challenge isn't just about production of new homes, but also preserving our existing stock that would otherwise fall into disrepair and no longer remain affordable. Again, I am a strong proponent for the West Side Wood subdivisions. I ask that you please vote yes.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk will entertain one other commenter, and then we will, the commission will take a 10-minute break.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Prior to a short recess, then I have a name titled as the Plate Family. Excuse me, I would ask that whoever's speaking to state their name for the record.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, my name's Adam Plate. I'm a resident at 2580 Woodward Avenue. My wife and I are both physicians here in town, and as an emergency physician, I echo the previous comments of the emergency preparedness and public safety concerns. And just to add a few anecdotes, do I have a camera on or am I just?
Oh, the camera is on. If you turn yours on, we'll be able to see your face.
I can't figure.
I guess not.
Never mind. Okay, I was going to show you a picture of the pickup situation today at the end of the day, getting the kids from Kessler. But basically, both sides of the road for three blocks are completely gridlocked with parked cars. The road's reduced to a single lane of traffic, and if you go up the hill from there, there's kids walking up both sides of the road. And this is on an icy road, which, as I was going in for a night shift two weeks ago, had an 18-wheeler that locked up its brakes and slid all the way from Flowery down to Euclid before it stopped. I personally, three years ago, had a car that slid through night, blew through the stop sign, and totaled my car, and both of our vehicles ended up on the sidewalk in front of Kessler. So I have serious concerns about adding this level of volume to these streets without solving the traffic issue and creating a safe way for the kids to get in and out of school. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, the commission will take a 10-minute break, and we will be back by 8:15. Oh, 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 no. Oh, 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 no. The media is not called back to order. Madam Clerk, do we have any other, for public comments on this topic?
Mr. Mayor, I do have several hands raised. At this time, I, next in line, next in the queue, was Marga Bertoglio.
Okay, Marga, I'll just remind you all that we will entertain public comments of two minutes. So you have the floor, Marga.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
And thank you for your service, Director Haugen. I would like to say I concur with Derek Hedlin of Green Source, so I don't complicate what he had to say. My name's spelled B-E-R-T-O-G-L-I-O. And I'm a Montana representative for House District 75, which is a large portion of Jefferson County. And I served on local government, which we definitely, the two topics that were hot topics, the hot topics for subdivision review and lack of affordable housing. So I applaud you all for trying to find relief on all sides of this issue and for considering Westside Woods. As I just have stated previously in November, we all know there's a housing shortage, and working together, we can be a part of solutions to help fellow Montanans on a home and subsequently, business owners fill much-needed jobs. I'm a proponent of the zoning and subdivision for the following reasons: Helena is growing, and this follows the growth plan. If a developer has followed the subdivision process in which he takes into account, or she, health, safety, general welfare, and infrastructure, at some point, we've got to find a way forward on these projects. More traffic doesn't necessarily equate to less safe roads. And I think this developer has taken into account the school safety with the blinking lights and such. Secondly, more homes will help with the tax base and perhaps enable those in existing homes to move to these newer homes and thereby adding to the supply of existing homes. Third, I have seen firsthand the shortage of homes and people like teachers and nurses who want to work here but cannot because they cannot find a home. I want all people across varying occupations and stages in life to afford the American dream. This subdivision proposes multifamily and single-family homes. Approving this will enable our great community to move forward positively while helping many people live the dream of homeownership. Again, thank you for your time, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, Marga. Madam Clerk?
Next, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have Corey Chinoweth.
You have the floor, Corey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for taking my comments. I just want to reiterate what we have talked about before. So I live at 2630 Knight Street. I am right smack dab in the middle of where this subdivision is going to be. I have two small children who attend Kessler. They walk to school every single day. And as the, I don't remember his name, the traffic engineer from Bozeman mentioned, is on Knight Street, which I don't think was mentioned in the developer's presentation and his traffic engineer earlier as an egress route. But on Knight Street, that is the quickest form of egress for the northernmost area of that subdivision. I believe it is Phases 1 and probably Phases 2. Knight Street is an incredibly narrow street. I don't know if you guys have driven that or not. In fact, it's so narrow that probably almost half of the houses on our street have those little plastic crossing guard things out with a flag to make sure people slow down because they do get so close to our curbs and so close to our front lawns. And there is a very sharp S curve right in the middle of that. So if you're able to look at that map again, I'm obviously not able to share my screen. But if you're able to look at that map, it is a very sharp S curve, and that is going to be a major egress route for this new subdivision. And quite frankly, it isn't equipped for it. And the engineer said that there would be an added 850 trips per day. And this isn't a major collector street. He said it is a local street not designated as a collector. So I'm speaking just in terms of a dad of two small kids who like to play outside in the front yard, playing street hockey, basketball, baseball, football with their dogs, that this really concerns me. I'm not against the development. I'm against how well it's planned out. I think we've seen that Saving Westside Helena has done an amazing job of doing their due diligence and finding and doing the research on that. Whereas I don't believe you've seen that with the developer. I would say that most of the people you're going to hear from who oppose it are people who live in the area and have a vested interest. It sounds to me, those in favor so far are as an electrician who has an vested interest in making money off the project and kind of a random politician from Jefferson County, which seems a little odd to me. So I would encourage you all. Oh, and the other thing, the other collection street is Overlook. Overlook is going to see a large increase in traffic. And if anybody has driven Overlook, especially right now with the icy roads, it's essentially a one-lane road where you, it's pretty dangerous to go more than about seven miles an hour down that road. And if we're adding a few hundred more streets down that road as well, it's going to, there's going to be an increased danger to the general public. And one other thing before I let you go, and thanks for listening to me here. You know, we've heard a lot about affordable housing, right? So just in our little break, I thought it'd be interesting to see what Sussex is offering in terms of affordable housing. In their Heron Creek Lots and Estates, you can get a 2,400-square-foot house for $651,000. You can get a 1,790-square-foot house for $575,000. You can get an 1,820-square-foot house for $627,000. So this whole idea that they are so good-hearted and really looking out for the middle class in Helena and being able to provide the-
Mr. Chinoweth, would you wrap up, please?
Absolutely. They'll be providing affordable housing does not check out versus compared to their website that they are advertising right now. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, next in the queue, I have Dan and Colleen Nichols.
Dan and Colleen, you have the floor.
Hi, my name is Colleen Nichols. I have resided at 913 Granite. I live directly south of Kessler School. And I've been at this address for 33 years, so obviously I've seen a lot of changes in my neighborhood. I do support the public health and safety concerns shared by Save Helena Westside. Sarah Perry's presentation was incredible, and that is the issue that keeps me awake at night. It's related to the evacuation from our neighborhood. When the wind-driven wildfire from the southwest roars into our area, imagine that scene as people are attempting to escape their homes and we're all ending up jammed on granite trying to access Euclid. At that same time, there's going to be frantic families from outside our neighborhood trying to reach their children at Kessler, using that single access point on granite. They'll probably be driving on smoke-filled roads clogged with fleeing vehicles. I imagine many will leave their vehicles to save their children, creating complete deadlock. Fire and emergency personnel will also be impeded as the neighborhood flees on that single access point. Unfortunately, wildfires are a new reality experienced in Denton in December, where 50 structures, including a bridge, were destroyed. Also, at that same time in December, Great Falls had a grass fire that burned 11 homes. On December 31st, Superior Colorado lost over 570 homes. To quote Governor Polis of Colorado, he said, "This was a disaster in fast motion. Many families had only minutes to get whatever they could, their kids, their pets, into the car and leave." This area, it's like the area we live in. Paradise, California had an evacuation plan that split the city into evacuation zones. But that plan did not envision the panicked evacuation of the neighborhoods. In that November 2018 fire that burned through Paradise in four hours, 85 lives were lost. Many were elderly and unable to evacuate. 18,000 structures were lost, and 30,000 people lost their homes. We've seen the significant environmental changes over the past five years. More of Montana is now at significant risk of fire year-round. And future development needs to recognize this threat and plan accordingly. Please put our public safety first and oppose the Westside subdivision in its current proposal and deny the proposed pre-zoning for the sake of our community and our neighborhood school. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, next I have Mandy Needham.
You have the floor, Mandy.
Hello, this is Mandy Needham. 2587 Knight Street is my address. Just a couple of things. I want to second the concerns over like the affordable housing, the side-street traffic congestion. We have a lot of density there in terms of cars parked on the sides of the streets and not even being able to fit two cars going both directions should we need to have anything or a large number of vehicles go through there quickly. For the Kessler safety concerns, I do have two children who go there as well, so I just want to reiterate that. Another one I want to call out that I haven't really heard yet is the bulbouts. If I remember correctly from other talks from a couple of other folks, bulbouts can cause maintenance concerns in terms of plowing, trying to keep those clear. And then I also wanted to add that I have seen, especially during pickup and drop-off, trying to keep traffic flowing, cars drive over those. And so just trying to point out the few things that they are the safety things, but they're also not followed by everybody, so just wanting to point that out. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Mandy. Madam Clerk?
Next, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have Tyler Emmert.
You have the floor, Tyler.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, Commissioners. I'll keep my comments specific to the zoning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Keep my comments specific to the zoning since that's the item on your agenda that you're talking about. City zoning doesn't have a ton of options. They've chosen R2 and R3, which really are pretty mild zonings. There is room for discussion on should Helena be doing more with our zoning, you know, a form-based approach to zoning similar to what they did with downtown, a little more active in the look and feel of how you do a project with the zoning. We have not engaged in that. So this developer really has a choice of your options of zoning. The county is currently in the process of writing zoning, which would impact this area. It is an exact copy of your city's zoning. So it will be the same zone as he's picking today. It'll just be in the county. So his first agenda item, he's saying, "I want R2 and R3." Those are, those are pretty benign zonings. You could go with a much higher density. I think it matches your growth policy. I think it's a pretty reasonable zoning. And I'll keep my comments specific to that issue on your agenda and comment on the other ones later.
Thank you, Tyler. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, next I have Eve Byron.
You have the floor, Eve.
Well, I thank you, Mayor Collins, and and welcome Commissioners Fever and Reed to this ongoing discussion. I just wanted to mention that I echo the comments of my neighbors. And the things that they cannot bring to the table that I believe I can is the the fear in the eyes that I saw of Rocky Infinger, Sonny Steiger, Bird's Eye Fire, Leo Dutton, and all those folks when there was a fire upon Mac Pass in two thousand nine. And they were preparing not not what will we do? But how will we deal with this when it comes roaring into Helena? There was the luck of the winds at that time, and it did not happen. But this subdivision would be the most susceptible. And with the heavy zoning that they want to put in as well as the hammerhead turnarounds. And Sean, I know that as a firefighter, what what firefighter would go into a cul-de-sac knowing that there's one way in and one way out? That may not be particular to the zoning aspect of all of this. But I encourage you in the, just because of the public safety aspect of all of this, to reject this and send it back to the developer and tell them you can do better than this. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, next I have an individual listed as Jeff A. Please list your full name for the record.
Jeff A, would you list your full name? You have the floor.
Hi, can you hear me?
Oh, yes.
Jeff is my husband. My name is Andrea Allen. It must be because of he set up the computer. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I live at twenty five twenty four Flowery Street. And I would urge you to deny this approval of the zoning tonight for this builder. Just because there's a housing crisis doesn't mean that a new development can be rushed through and approved in spite of serious safety concerns that have been mentioned many times tonight and by many of our neighbors. Personally, we've had four children attend Kessler School, starting in twenty thousand, twenty two thousand seven until two thousand nineteen. The drop off and pickup situation has always been a very difficult spot. It's extremely busy and it's always been very unsafe. That's no fault of the school. Kessler has always tried to make it as safe as possible for Helena's children. The situation, however, has has gotten worse as time goes on and as more people have come to live on the west side of town. I personally have seen a friend get T boned on Granite Street by another car that went through a stop sign on Hauser. Myself, my husband and my two sons are always extra cautious traveling up and down Granite Street. And we have all had many close calls by the same type of situation. Are we really ready to sacrifice the community's safety and health in order to have a new development be built that most people here don't want and that will threaten us all? While I do understand the housing needs are very important for for professionals to come into our town and for our town to grow and develop. We should make sure that this, that safety is the utmost. Safety from fire, safety from traffic issues and promoting public safety is extremely important to myself and all of our neighbors. I just ask that you please put safety first and listen to all of the people who have these grave concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Next, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I have L Ulrich. Please state your full name for the record.
You have the floor, L Ulrich. Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Liz Ulrich, and I live at twenty five thirty Knight Street. I am two houses away from Granite Avenue. And just to to let you know, that is the path of least resistance for traffic. I know that the developer and has said that vehicles will travel down Hauser and access Euclid on different locations. But why would somebody drive twenty five miles per hour a longer distance to get to Euclid when they can just hit Granite, head down there, driving twenty five miles an hour, hit Euclid and be able to go forty five? It is the path of least resistance, and that's where people will travel. And speaking to the amount of traffic near Kessler School, we already get a lot of folks traveling down our street during that pickup time. A lot of people do U turns on Knight Street to be able to access the school. If this amount of traffic is increased, it's just going to create more and more safety concerns for our students that attend Kessler. Appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you, L Ulrich. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, next I have Patrick Maron.
You have the floor, Patrick.
Hello, Mayor and City Commissioners.
Hello.
As the Helena Citizens Council District One Representative, I would like to express my concerns from my neighbors that propose, or sorry, would would not like to see the current plan take place in this subdivision. Please respect the city county parks board decisions, the zoning board decision and the planning board decision of denying the current plan of this subdivision. Again, we are not opposed to development in this area. We are opposed to the safety and traffic concerns that have been previously listed. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, next I have Ann Williams Morgan and Lonnie Morgan.
You have the floor, Ann.
Yes, my name is Lonnie Morgan, reside at twenty six eighty Hauser Boulevard with my wife Ann Williams. I just really wanted to state our opposition to the R three zoning, the crowding of multifamily homes directly across the street from our house. If you showed a map of the Bellevue addition and these tiny little lots, our lot is twenty thousand square feet. We live right across the street. All these stacked up homes across the street and the fire hazard and no way out is just a disaster. I am personally insulted as a twenty year business owner in Helena, Montana, that they keep throwing the same plan up here, acting as if it's different or that it's better. They have to come up with better egress and less population. This area was developed when they moved the overlooked Knight Street down into the overlooked division, which used to run directly in front of our property since now. It was for the intent of having single family homes here. It doesn't take the rocket science to see what the developers intended. All of the multifamily, large development is down along Euclid Avenue where they can get access out of here. None of this was ever intended for these multifamily developments, and I oppose them strongly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, next I have Forrest Zimmerman.
You have the floor, Forrest.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for hearing me. Appreciate your time. I've spoken on this before in the previous meetings as far as zoning. I would like to point out what you don't have in front of you as commissioners that you should have, like city code. One of those is a traffic study based on the density that the zoning being proposed will promote. You do not have any traffic impact study that shows what that amount of traffic will do to this area. The the city requires within a traffic impact study law, level of service numbers for the area intersections. And with all the experience that the developer and their traffic engineer claims, they would know that they have to include this, and they have not. You do not know that the level of service for the intersection of Granite and Euclid in two thousand fourteen was declared as a level D, which is below the minimum standard of a level C that has to be mitigated and explained clearly how it would be mitigated. And that was to turn, that's that's in the public record of the Helena growth plan that the Granite and Euclid is operating at a level C slash D or D slash F. I can't remember which, but it's below a level C. And there is no mitigation for that listed other than possibly a traffic signal at that area in the future. But the fact that the traffic study submitted by the developer claims that that's not an issue should give you pause into the credibility of that traffic study. And there is no law, level of intersection data for Knight Street and Hauser, Knight Street and Granite, overlook in Granite, overlook in Hauser, and I could go on. What you also don't have is any information that talks about the sewer system and the impact that this that this subdivision will have on the sewer system. Our own city officials, who are not responsible, or city staff, Sharon Haugen and Mike McConnell, speaking for them tonight, are not responsible, to my my understanding, of creating these numbers. They're not, they're not responsible for doing traffic counts. They're not responsible for doing traffic impact studies. They're responsible for certifying that that information's provided. However, you've seen the evidence from South Save Helena West Side's own review of those, that traffic study, that there are questions in that. You also have from the city information that the sewer running from this area down Granite, that eight inch pipe is going to be overtaxed, so much so that the city commissioned a study from an outside firm, much as Save Helena West Side did for the traffic, to review the developer's information and found that there is a one hundred percent chance of overrunning the capacity of the sewer system with no remedy for that stated in the conditions that would that would support the number of people that the zoning numbers, the zoning density that you're about to be asked, that you're being asked to vote on, would remedy. City code requires all the numbers be based on the zoning densities and for traffic and water and sewer, not the number that the developer has proposed. The only numbers you have access to and that the city staff has reviewed are the numbers from a subset of that density that the developer's proposing. And the city says twenty five percent duplex, seventy five percent single family for R two. The developer has claimed it's a hundred percent single. He doesn't include that twenty five percent duplex, and there's nothing stopping him from building as many duplexes as he wants. That's just the zoning rules. Thirty for the R, R three areas, thirty percent multifamily, forty percent duplex. The developer has submitted a hundred percent multifamily, whereas the city's numbers say thirty percent single family. So my, my whole thing, my whole point of this is to say, look at what the information's provided to you and the credibility. I think we're being presented with a Faustian bargain here, and I'm urging you not to approve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, next I have Mary Almond Hibbard.
You have the floor, Mary.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you Commissioners for the time tonight. I know this is a really controversial subject for a lot of people. And I think it's important to remember that this first part that you will be voting on is on the zoning. And just, I wanted to reiterate what Tyler Emmert said, which is that Sussex had to propose zoning within the structure that the city gives. And the only way for them to have affordable housing within the subdivision is to offer both R two and R three zoning. That's one thing that I wanted to mention additionally. I think that it's important to remember that in doing the subdivision, they're going to be improving roads. And that that includes sidewalks for for kids to be able to walk to and from school. There are so many improvements that are being proposed, but that is for another part of the discussion. I just again want to reiterate that I support the R two that Sussex is proposing because I know that it will impact the number of people who can have affordable housing within the subdivision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, the last hand I have raised at this time is from an individual listed as surface pro three, if they would please list their name for the record.
Thank you. Surface Pro three, would you list your name, please? You have the floor. You are also muted. You may want to unmute yourself.
Hello?
Hello?
My name is Tracy Wong. Live at twenty five twenty five Hauser Boulevard. We built our house here thirty seven years ago. We're right in the heart of this whole thing. One concern I have that's probably never been brought up over there is this open space area that he claims, and I believe he knows. I believe it's an old dump site. And I'm really concerned about what it could do with the water. The tin is starting to come to the ground. I hike that with the dog a lot. And I don't think that's ever been looked into. I know this probably doesn't follow under the zoning right now, but I'm not sure the city would want to adopt something that has a dump site on it that could possibly be come back on their heels at some time. And I think it's something that should be looked at. And that's my biggest concern about that area.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, do you have any others?
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I do not have any other hands raised. I do, however, have several written comments. Would you like me to read those into the record?
Would you please read them into the record?
From Bridget Waples, page six, current lot size and page seven, what was plotted years ago have two different lot sizes in comparison to Sussex's presentation. The current sizes of the lots are not smaller. Can we clarify this, please? Patrick Maron, Mr. McConnell mentioned the petition that Sussex has advertised in the IR and meetings at Ten Mile Brewery to get support from contractors and realtors. No Westside residents sign this petition. Why didn't Mr. McConnell mention the petition against the development from Westside Residence, which has five hundred and ninety two signatures? For the record, mayors and mayor and commissioners, in order to expedite things with the written comment, I'd ask that folks, please make your comments in the Q and A succinct instead of repeatedly posting. So I'll move on to the next public comment rather than repeat those that have already commented. Edward Santos, zoning is to ensure a development is developed according to a specific city plan, i.e. not to have a pig farm in residential, and secondly, to keep our citizens safe. The current R three zoning that is proposed needs to be changed to R two on the south side, Flowery Street. Due primarily because this part of the property borders wildlands and is exposed to a high risk of forest fires and is unsafe to have so many families so close on a dead end road. Three zoning on the northeast side should be R two because it is not fair to the long time residents. Sussex just presented that a complete streets are safe, but most of the streets in the subdivision are long dead end streets that make it unsafe and should have less density. It should be R two, but no on the R three. Hannah Maron, twenty five nine zero Knight Street. The city mentioned signatures in favor of this development, but do any of those people live in the west side? Or do they all just have financial gain in the development? You also need to mention the five hundred and ninety two signatures in opposition for this current development plan. Also, the land mentioned left for open space is unusable, and the city parks denied this land. I am not against developing this area, but I just want to make sure it is done correctly and safely. Megan Buck, please be mindful of the two minute allowance. Derek Kettleen, what happened to limiting comments to two minutes? Heron Creek Design Team, what happened to the two minute limit? Jim Lund, the risk of fire is extremely concerning. On September second, two thousand twenty, I watched from my home in shock and horror as a fire off of Birdside Road near Fort Harrison consumed eight hundred acres of land in about an hour. The fire moved with alarming speed. See bird's eye grass, fire burns eight hundred acres in Helena West Valley in the Helena IR nine three two thousand twenty. Ricky Emerson, what is the average home price proposed by the developer for this development? Again, I won't repeat those that have already had an opportunity to comment. Melanie Simons, the developer was given sixty days to address many of the issues now being discussed. There was very little done by the developer during that time other than to give the Department of Transportation information created by Save Helena West Side and an outdated traffic impact. and an outdated traffic impact study. No changes have been proposed to address safety concerns, but considerable has been given to solicit online signatures from people whose profession will benefit from the development. Why wasn't more done by the developer to address these concerns? Galen McCallister, the question at hand is zoning. I will therefore defer most of my comments for the next items to be considered. I have no issues with zoning the property R2 and R3. However, safety is a zoning consideration. I urge the developer to completely redraw their proposal to address safety. If they do this, I favor R2 and R3 zoning. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, that is all I have for written comments.
Thank you. Any final discussion from the Commissioner?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner Dean.
Just a quick comment. Really appreciate all the public comment that we've received. On this first item, I am going to be voting to approve the proposed zoning designation, because we are required to make this evaluation based on the zoning criteria, based on the information we've been provided. And this is also within the urban standards boundary. I will have more to say about the transportation-related issues, but that will be for the other agenda items where it's more appropriate.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other final discussion from the Commissioner?
Well, is this the time we discuss a motion, or is this where we?
This is the time you tell us, if you have any other discussion, then we will move to the vote.
Okay.
If you have any other thing you want to discuss about this?
Well, I think it is, I think it is relevant, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it.
What's that?
I think it is relevant that the zoning commission voted three to zero on this proposal. And if we believe our zoning commission knows what it's about, we as a commission should pay some heed to that decision that they made. That R2 seems appropriate, and maybe more parkland seems appropriate, even though that was not part of the discussion here tonight. But the density proposed by this, this, you know, pre-planning, pre-plat, pre-zoning property is just pretty extreme. And I think that's what the folks speaking tonight are talking about. It's all about density, and it goes from there. Traffic, fire, you name whatever outcome you wish, density rules.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any others? Okay. Madam Clerk, at this time, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you want to allow it.
No, no, we're done with public comments. It's the commission time, and we'll move forward to what we have to do. So I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we deny the ordinance pre-zoning property as described.
Second.
It's been movement seconded.
Mayor and Commissioner, this is Thomas. I just wanted to recommend that the commission engage in a little bit more discussion as to why the commission is voting, commissioners are voting the way they are, more of a robust record as to this decision.
Thank you.
Well, as the maker of the motion, I?
Hold on, hold on, Commissioner. I see someone hands up. Commissioner Logan?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Let's see, I need to pull up something here that was pointed out by our planner, I believe, early in his presentation. Montana Code gives us criteria and guidelines for zoning regulations. They must be designed to, one, secure safety from fire and other dangers, two, promote public health, public safety, and the general welfare, and three, facilitate the adequate provision of transportation and water, transportation, water, sewage, schools, parks, and other public requirements. You know, as I consider those things, I think I have some, I think there are some pretty compelling concerns relative to fire safety, pretty compelling concerns relative to traffic safety and the zoning that is being proposed in this development. So I guess, to Thomas's request, that's, I would say that's why I'm seconding Commissioner Fever's motion to deny. Thank you.
As for, we're required, as stated in by our, the staff, the zoning meets the requirement according to the study done by the staff. And because of that, and it also meet the urban standards, the urban standards. So because of that, I will be voting for it. Commissioner Reed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would second what you just said. I believe that the recommendation from the staff is that it does meet the urban standards and that the zoning itself is acceptable, so I will be voting to support the zoning and not for the motion that has been made.
Commissioner Fever?
You know, I think it's fairly obvious that the zoning, as is proposed here, overbuilds this neighborhood. It overbuilds it not only in the undeveloped portion of that property, but in the already developed portion that is Overlook and Knight Street, Granite, Hauser, Flowery. And why we would look at R3, which could be open to some fairly significant multiplexes around the neighborhood now as already planned, but as may come down the road, and see that not as a problem going forward, is surprising to me. And again, I will reiterate, the zoning commission voted three to zero not to approve this proposal. And I take them at their word. I believe they must have studied this in some detail. That's why we have a zoning commission, and I'm going to go with that. I stand by my motion. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, what, Mr. Jordan, I know there was a motion on, do we continue with that motion and go about the vote?
Yeah, go, so Commissioner Fever and Commissioner Logan seconded a motion to deny.
Madam Clerk, would you take the vote, please?
Commissioner Dean? Excuse me, I'm losing my voice, Mayor. Commissioner Logan?
Hi.
Commissioner Reed?
No.
Commissioner Fever?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
No.
The motion fails two to three.
Thank you. Two, consider a variance.
Mayor, do you want to, maybe, I don't know if another commissioner wants to make a motion to approve? A 12A?
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve an ordinance that would freeze on the property that comprises the proposed subdivision, commonly referred to as the West Side Major Phase subdivision, as R2 and R3.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Hi.
Commissioner Fever?
No.
Commissioner Logan?
No.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries three to two.
Two. Bravo. Consider a variance from 12 dash four dash C dash two C of the City Helena Code for each of the following blocks on the West Side Major Phase subdivision. Thus allowing each such block to exceed 600 feet in length. Phase one, Livesey Avenue from Hauser Boulevard to Lee Drive, which blocks shall be 659.52 long. Phase three, Lee Drive to Brickman Avenue to Livesey Avenue, which block should be 636.61 long. At phase three, Brickman Avenue from Park Avenue to Brickman Court, which block should be 922 dash 49 long. Manager Hollis Shaw, Community Development Director and Planner McConnell.
Thank you, Mayor. This begins the conversation around variance specific to the subdivision. Variance is a requirement within the subdivision process and in advance of it on the agenda. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Director Haugen and Planner to Michael McConnell to explain the considerations that are required by state law for your review.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no comments, and I'd like to turn it over to Mr. McConnell.
Mr. McConnell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This will be a relatively quick one, as far as my presentation goes. So this is a variance to our subdivision regulations 1242. Let's see, for block length, as you said, there are three of them, and I'll get into those now. Originally, there were a few other variances that were considered. Those have been withdrawn. Dead-end streets, all of them, that were longer than 600 feet have been removed, shortened. And then the dead-end streets that are longer than 150 feet do have an emergency turnaround. All of the variances for curbside sidewalks or attached sidewalks have been removed. And all, so now all of the sidewalks within the subdivision will have boulevards. Oops, sorry. And the Plenary Board did vote to recommend approval for these specific block length variances. And the applicant cites various topographic constraints for these variances, as well as a water course, I believe, for the Livesey Avenue variance as well. You can see, let her see there, that is the specific code section. Blocks may not exceed 600 feet in length, except when a longer length is needed to meet grade limitations the distant build environment, water bodies, railroad crossings, or industrial uses. These, on the left here, are the review criteria that could lead the commission to either granting or denying a variance. And variances from these regulations may be granted when the subdivider meets the burden of proving that the granting of the variance will not be detrimental to public health, safety, and general welfare or injurious to other adjacent properties. If little, literal enforcement of the provisions of these regulations will result in unnecessary hardships due to particular physical surroundings, shape, or topographical conditions that are unique to the specific property involved, and that cannot be reasonably resolved by redesigning the subdivision proposal. The variance will not cause a substantial increase in public costs and that the variance conforms to the growth policy in this code. On the right, you'll see a map of the subdivision with the orange arrows pointing to each instance of variance being asked for. The first one, Livesey Avenue, it is proposed that that section of Livesey Avenue be 659 feet. Lee Drive, the second one, is proposed to be 636 feet. Brapton Avenue is the longest at 922 feet. It's worth noting that these are variances to the public roads, and the private roads do not factor into this. These two maps here represent the slopes over 25% on the right. It's kind of the pinkish color, are all slopes that are over 25%. And the map on the left, which does have the phases for your reference, show the cuts and fills over three feet, which will be necessary to accommodate. I included these because the applicant is citing the topographical constraints. And all, since I did not include the legend, the what, the map on the, on the left, red, is a fill of more than three feet. The blue is a cut of more than three feet. And the green is a cutter fill of less than three feet. So these are the potential motions that are up for consideration as a result, as a result of the request for these variances. I'm now available for any questions, if those are necessary.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell.
Mayor, if I may?
Did you, I'm sorry, did you want to add something?
Sorry, one item of clarification, Mayor. I'm hoping to request from Planner to McConnell, what exactly is the reason behind the block length? And explain why we have that capped.
Sure, I'm sorry. So it's my understanding that the block length was put into the subdivision regulations specifically to address mobility, particularly pedestrian mobility, which is definitely something that the growth policy supports and promotes. I didn't answer your question, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Dean?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I have two questions. The first one, I think, is probably most relevant for Mr. Knopki. And then my second one is just on the motion. So I'm wondering, Dr. Knopki, can you give us maybe some context of grade? Specifically, like when you're looking at, for example, like Reader's Village or Reber Road, or like Henderson above Euclid? What are some of the grades of those streets?
Mayor and Commissioners, some of those grades, for example, Henderson above Euclid, south of Euclid, ranges from 13 and a half to 17. And there's some very short sections that come close to 20%. Reader's Village is right around 13, the 12 to 13%, and Reber Road is right around 11% for frame of reference.
Good, that's helpful. Thank you. My second question, I'm going to guess this is for Mr. McConnell. Do you, for this motion, do you want it to be three separate motions, or can it be one motion?
It's my understanding that it has to be three separate motions, but I'll defer to Attorney Haugen on that.
That's correct, Mayor. Commissioner Dean?
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments from the commission? I just got one question here. Planner McConnell, with the variance, with the proposed variances that you're seeking, will they meet standards?
Mayor, Commissioners, I'm sorry, which standards?
The, the standards that we need to have those, the block length, and within that, within the cul-de-sac. And within that, within the cul-de-sac, all of that.
I'm sorry, I don't, I mean. Standards for roads and the engineering standards, is that what we're talking about?
Engineering, roads, everything, will they be, will they meet standards?
Believe in all other aspects of a road, they will meet the standards other than block length. With.
Okay.
Settle up, yeah.
Thank you, any other questions from the commission? At this time, we'll entertain public comments. Madam Clerk, do we have any raised hand? Ron, you have the floor.
Hello Commissioners, Mister Mayor, thank you so much, I appreciate that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn this over to Jeremy Favers. He's gonna talk a little bit about the reasoning behind why we're asking for this variance and the intent of the code and how we meet that intent, so with that, Jeremy, could you please jump on first?
Yeah, thanks, Ron, can you hear me?
Go ahead, yes, we can.
Okay, again, appreciate your time tonight, as as Mike woman noted in his staff report. We had requested several variances up upfront when we first submitted zoning application or the subdivision application, excuse me, and. Many of those variances were were resolved with the planning staff and we basically came down to these three variances that. Due to topographic constraints of the site, just, there's just no way we can. Really do this development due to geography, so Lee Drive is the first one that you have in your list. We're proposing this to be six hundred and thirty six feet rather than six hundred feet. And again, due to, just due to topographic constraints, you know. Trying to move this down the hill just increases our cut fill issues on the on the downhill side of or the uphill side of Lee Drive. And then Livesay Avenue on the on the downhill side of Lee Drive, we just were really blocked into a drainage crossing on the east side. And our cut fill, our cut fills and trying to really balance those cut fills, not make. Huge cuts in this area, as you can see from this exhibit, we are providing connectivity to the trail system, open space lot to the east. You can see this easement in this green, this green hatched area as a proposed trail. That will that will go to the east and connect to existing trails. All other aspects of Lee Drive will be constructed to city standards, including no more than ten percent grade. Complete streets with curb gutter boulevards and sidewalks and all other requirements of city standards. Livesay Avenue is proposed to be six hundred and forty six point six three feet instead of the six hundred feet length. Again, this one, you can see we have a drainage that runs right through the middle, it's almost. Not quite exactly in the middle between Hauser Boulevard and Lee Drive, but it's pretty close, and so this. This is really simply due to that that drainage and topography. To get across that, open spaces provided at mid-block on both sides of Livesay Avenue, as you can see from here. We are also providing mid a mid-block pedestrian crossing and trails on both sides to connect. The sidewalks proposed in Livesay to the the open space lots and the proposed trail system and the open space lots. Again, all other aspects of Livesay Avenue will meet city engineering standards and subdivision regulations, including no more than ten percent grade. Cool, curbing gutter, boulevards and sidewalks. And then Breakman Avenue is is our longest block, as you can see on this exhibit, Breakman Avenue comes down the hill from Park Drive. And it really, it follows the ridge, so it follows the ridge down here. To where it intersects with Lee Drive at the the north end. Again, where this one is nine hundred and twenty two feet. So it's 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 a little bit longer than the other ones. We are again providing mid-block, mid-block pedestrian easements and trails on either side. This, the one on the south side of Breakman will connect up to the cul-de-sac. At Flowery, at the south end of the development and the and going to the north will connect in with the trail system and the open space lot. To the north, that will break lock up in about half. To provide that pedestrian connectivity, again, all other aspects of Breakman will meet city standards, including grade and complete streets with boulevards and sidewalks. We would, we also just wanted to point out that there are several developments throughout the city of city of Helena that in the past. Especially even in recent years have have approved variances for block lengths, including the newest subdivision on the east side. Of Helena, Mountain View Meadows, there are some, this exhibit shows Aspen Park subdivision with eight hundred and eighty foot. Linear linear feet of block length and then one with eleven hundred linear feet of block length. And then this is. The South Helen Interchange, the Nob Hill subdivision, you can see these these law, these blocks are 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 pretty long in here too, seven hundred and twenty feet, nine hundred and twenty. And two thousand one hundred and fifty linear feet, I, these are just a couple of examples. From around Helena, I'm sure there, I'm sure there are others. I think that's all that I have and we'll entertain any questions.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any other public comments?
Mister Mayor, next I have Tyler Emmert.
You have the floor, Tyler.
Yeah, I'll keep my comments specific to the agenda item on block length and having Sharon on the phone. She kind of passed on her opportunity to talk about this, but I remember some lengthy conversations with with Sharon and Lucy. When we added block length not too long ago as a requirement to take a look at, it's a good requirement to have. Ideally, you keep blocks about four hundred and fifty feet, makes a neighborhood very walkable at four hundred and fifty feet, access is great. But when they added that, there was a lot of discussion with the understanding that this isn't doable in a lot of locations. And my focus at the time was on box stores, now none of us like box stores, I get it. It's kind of a necessary evil, we like affordable products at Walmart, but we may not love Walmart. Can't really do a six hundred foot block length around Walmart, so we talked about that at the time. And the understanding was, well, you're gonna have to apply some for some variances when that comes up. Grade was one of the issues that was discussed when this was added, it was understood that, you know, in times where there's grade, if we're gonna maintain. The K values we have in the subdivision regulations and we're gonna maintain intersections at four percent, we're gonna maintain grades at ten percent. If there's very much grade, it's really difficult to keep those block lengths below six hundred feet and where you see those longer block lengths in Mountain View Meadows. And where you see them in Nob Hill, it's because of the grade, now. You, if you want houses next to Helena and Helena has areas that have some slope to them. The best option is to put, make your walkability as good as possible where you have long block lengths.
You want to wrap up, Tyler?
I will, the neighborhood I live in has block lengths of about nine hundred feet, nobody in my neighborhood would say we need more streets. They would say it would be handy to be able to walk halfway through the block. Which is what's proposed, I think utilizing walkability to shorten block lengths is a good solution. To a standard that's encouraging shorter blocks. But may not be doable.
Madam Clerk.
Mister Mayor Commissioners, next I have David Wilson.
I see, I'm sorry, I see a hand raised here. Sarah Perry hand is raised. Did you not see it?
Mister Mayor, this is Kim Wilson, do you want me to go first, she's already unmuted me?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mister Mayor and Commissioners, again, Kim Wilson representing Save Helena is what's west side. City regulations create a high bar for the granting of variances. You have to show that it will not be detrimental to the public health, safety and general welfare or injurious to other properties. Block lengths have been put in place for good reasons and variances should be granted only for good reasons. I would incorporate by reference all the prior comments, both about traffic and the fire. Just note that longer than normal block lengths lengths, in this instance, connecting to cul-de-sacs will invariably lead to higher fire risk. Given all the previous discussion and given the health and safety bases for the regulations. And as set forth in our letters, we would urge the commissioners to deny these variance requests, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Wilson, Miss Barry. Miss Barry, you have the floor.
Yes, Mister Mayor, speaking on behalf of Save Helena West Side, we would echo what Kim Wilson just said that. As requirements in the city code that was just shown to you. Topography is only one of the items that's on the burden of the subdivider to prove granting the variance. That granting that the variance will not be detrimental to public health, safety or general welfare is also something that has to be proven and. The topography that is preventing the developer from being able to connect these streets is the same topography that those walking trails are going to go across. So if it is too steep to be able to connect the roads, that same steepness is what those trails are going to traverse. So now imagine how members of the community that aren't active and fit are going to be able to use those trails, especially in adverse conditions like snowy winters or like the conditions we have now. Where it has snowed, warmed up and then frozen again, those trails will be ice and for much of the year, they will not be usable. Therefore, the safety concerns that the developer is claiming will be alleviated by those walking trails is just not true. We ask that you please think clearly and about the whole picture as you determine whether or not they have truly proven. That these variances will not be detrimental to public health, safety or the general welfare, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Miss Barry. Madam Clerk.
The last hand I have raised, Mister Mayor and Commissioners, is Forrest Zimmerman.
You have to flow Forrest.
Mister Mayor Commissioners, thank you again, two things, the to reflect what Sarah Perry said, the. The cut through pedestrian streets or the walking trails to mitigate the long block lengths. Especially Livesay Avenue of nine hundred and some block or feet is. By their own documentation submitted to the city and on the city website in the engineering view. Some of those trails are in excess of twenty five percent grade, no trail surface is specified, no maintenance plan for those trails assessed is specified. Those are outside by far the scope of what the Helena Park System says are accessible trails to the general public. Also, the referenced streets provided to you as evidence and part of this public record are not dead end streets. Livesay Avenue and the other streets here are dead end streets, I've had the unfortunate pleasure in my life of guarding fire hoses. As a police officer, telling people why they can't leave their home. Why they can't return to their home with their kids, because you can't drive over fire hoses. There's all kinds of safety issues beyond that, that Miss Perry has articulated, so I would ask you to deny. This block length because you have not been provided with information that is clear and convincing, in fact, the only information that the developer has put. On the website as a as a justification for these block links. Is to just draw a line or the road straight from where they are and say, it goes into terrain, we can't put a road on, therefore we have to do it this way. No reasonable person would think, there's no other way to lay these roads out. On that terrain such that they can be drawn without long dead end block lengths. You have not been provided any evidence that there's no other solution and the evidence you have been provided is disingenuous at best, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments? Madam Clerk.
Mister Mayor Commissioners, I do have two written public comments on this item. From Patrick Maron, twenty five ninety ninth street, thank you Commissioner Fever for respecting the boards that have been established and have worked hard to recommend safety to the future of Helena residents. An individual listed only as Joe, I would ask the public always state their full name for the record. Now the fire hazard and evacuation situation is even more concerning with the long block length, thank you for considering public safety and health first. That is all I have for written comments.
Thank you.
Mister Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner.
I'm wondering if maybe Mister McConnell can put the motions back up. And then I'm happy to make a few and then I can. I guess I'll go, I'll start with the first one and then I'll give my reasoning and then we can go from there, is that okay? Okay, Mister Mayor, I will move to deny a variance to city code section twelve four two C. For block length for proposed road Livesay Avenue. You know, variations are a deviation in the requirements, there's nothing currently developed here. And so therefore I think that the, well, the developer can design to appropriately build within the reality of. The topography here and in alignment with city code.
I will need a second.
Second.
It's been moved and second, I do have any other final discussion. Okay. Commissioner Fever.
The motion is to deny, is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay. And can we discuss what's going on, where we are? I heard from you, Commissioner Dean, you've already made it clear, we're going to Commissioner Reed.
I would echo the comments made by Commissioner Dean, out of concern for safety issues in city code, I would move to deny the variance.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed, Commissioner Fever.
Same.
Commissioner Logan.
Yeah, in terms of. Promoting public health, public safety and the general welfare and the. Comments of of other commissioners, I would, I would agree.
I'm of the opinion that, yeah, thank you, Commissioner Logan. I I agree with all of the above and I also say that. I think they should be able to work within the city codes and ordinance, so that's why I will. Vote to deny this. Variance. So it's been moved and seconded, Adam Clerk, would you take the vote, please?
Commissioner Dean. Commissioner Fever.
Yes.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I will move to deny a variance to city code section twelve four two C for block length for proposed road Lee Drive.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Commissioner Dean.
Same reasoning as as for the first motion.
Commissioner Reed.
Same reasons also as the first motion, thank you.
Commissioner Fever.
Same.
Commissioner Logan.
So.
And I was also re-echo every, all the sentiments mentioned above. It's been moved and seconded, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Fever.
Yes.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Entertainer motion.
And the last one, I will move to deny a variance to city code section twelve four two C for block length for proposed road Breakman Avenue.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Commissioner Dean.
Same reasons as the first two. Same reasons as the first two.
Commissioner Reed.
Same reasons as the first two. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Fever.
I appreciate the motions made by Commissioner Dean.
Commissioner Logan.
Same as before, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, and I echo the same sentiments. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Fever.
Yes.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Now. On the next two, Charlie and Delta. Staff will make a joint presentation on the items C and D. The applicants will make his presentation and discussion and we'll have public comments and then we'll have rebuttal and then we'll have final discussion. And then we will take the vote. I repeat, the staff will make a joint presentation on items twelve Charlie and twelve Delta. The applicant will make his presentation, we'll have a discussion, then we'll open to the public. And there will be a rebuttal from the applicant and then there will be final discussion and roll call. So, Madam Holoshock.
Thank you, Mayor, Commission. These, both of these presentations by the staff will focus in on requirements of annexation, which are the primary conversation we had originally in November and then in concert with the subdivision process. Thank you, Mayor, for reviewing the method. I'll also, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Director Haugen and Planner McConnell.
Director Haugen, are you just going to switch it to Planner McConnell, right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I am.
You're short time.
With the city attorney because you you denied all the variances and that especially affects the design of the subdivision. So, Mr. Coe, Mr. Joden may want to weigh in before we proceed.
Mr. Mayor, this is Assistant City Attorney Eric Coe.
Go ahead, I mean Attorney Court, Coe.
Yeah, my concern here is that I'm not sure that the commission is now in a position to approve the subdivision as it currently stands because I think because the or the variances have been denied that the subdivision may take a far different form than what is currently in front of you. I think it might require a redesign from the developer. So I think maybe it would be beneficial to inquire of the developer and the engineer as to whether we can even proceed on the preliminary plot with those variances having been denied.
Also, can I also, can the annexation go forward, Deputy Coe?
My concern there with the annexation is again the statute that requires us to have the annexation and subdivision. Public hearings whenever possible at the same time. So and I think these are so interrelated, meaning the commission is acting on, I guess, bringing into the city a proposed subdivision. And I think those decisions are so related that they need to be considered together.
Okay, so we will turn to the developer then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I'm actually just now chatting with Jeremy Fadness as to some, as to what this actually means. Let me go ahead and have Jeremy, if you wouldn't mind getting on, can you explain if there's a way that we can work around this? I think two of these variances, we could work around this definitely. But there's there's a question about the Breakman Cork variance. So if you wouldn't mind letting Jeremy speak to that.
Jeremy, you have to, I don't see him around. Jeremy, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Commissioners. Yeah, this this is an interesting one. I mean, I I believe we can make slight adjustments to Lives A and Lee to try to meet those tonner foot block lengths. Breakman, Breakman is going to be the the issue coming down that hill. I think we we just have to look at a way to incorporate another access road in there to break up that, to break up that block somehow. I do not believe that that by doing that, we would increase the number of lots or or majorly reconfigure the development. That I guess that's my only thought is that I I think there's a possibility we could move forward with with a minor with a minor redesign to put in a connector somewhere that would not dramatically affect the layout of the subdivision.
Jeremy, I guess, Mayor and Commission. One other suggestion, and I guess this would be a question for city staff, but you know, mid-block on Breakman, as Jeremy said, Lee and Lives E can likely work around. So on Breakman, if there was some sort of mid-block emergency turnaround, would would that be something that would alleviate concerns, I guess? Or is that something, I mean, to me, that's not a significant change, I guess, question of that's something that can be entertained.
Go ahead, Attorney Court.
So looking at twelve two fourteen of the Helena city code, it says that street, a change in street layout resulting or sorry, street layout change resulting in a change in legal and physical access is a material change to subdivision application. So it's not something that we could, that the commission could sit, consider tonight.
So what would be the next process there, Attorney Court?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I believe the process would be that the commission should vote to deny the subdivision preliminary plat, vote to deny the annexation and have the applicant or the developer reapply pursuant to Helena city code twelve two four. Or sorry. I don't know if I'm, I think I might be quoting the wrong section of the Helena city code, but my conclusion is the same. It's a material change. The commission should vote to deny annexation and subdivision and request that developer reapply.
So do we, can we do that together or we have to do all of this individually?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, individually.
Okay, I see, I see. Ron, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. The only question I've got is is that the code that is cited, we would not be changing legal and physical access to any of these lots. They would remain the same. All we're talking about is adding another access point that breaks up the mid-block length. So that was the, that's the only question I have for legal staff is I don't believe we'd be changing legal and physical access to any of these lots.
Do you have a response for that, Commissioner, Attorney Court?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do believe it is still a material change.
Okay. Thank you. So we will go ahead and vote on the next two.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question of, well, I guess unless Commissioner Logan wants to go first, I just had a quick question for Attorney Coe.
Go ahead, you have the floor and then Commissioner Logan and.
Okay, Attorney Coe, I'm wondering, is it appropriate for us to make any comments regarding reapplication since what I'm hearing is that you are suggesting we need to deny or reject these two next motions because of the material change, but is it appropriate for us to make comments regarding? You know, what's to come?
No, I don't believe so.
It's not appropriate.
Not appropriate.
Okay, thanks.
So I'll entertain a motion for twelve Charlie.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Logan.
No, that's all right. That's that was, that was my intent.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Standby. So, Mr. Mayor, I would move to deny a resolution of attention to annex into the city of Helena property described as tract A on the certificate of survey filed as document number three, three, six, eight, five, eight and all of blocks four, five, six and nine of the Highland Park subdivision, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, and the adjacent rights of way.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
We need to take public comment on the motion.
Oh.
Sorry.
No, thank you. At this time, we'll entertain public comments on this topic. Madam Clerk, do we have any hands raised?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do have one hand raised. Tyler Emmert.
Tyler Emmert again. Tyler, you have the floor.
Thanks. Thank Commissioners. Housing, students in our schools are kind of a financial issue for our community right now. If we don't want houses in the county as we're moving forward with that zoning and we don't want houses here. You know, and financially, unless as a commission or group with the county, we group together to to kind of build that highway interceptor. Padberry's off the table. It's basically like saying we only want houses in the East Helena school district and financially that's kind of an issue for our school. So if we want neighborhood schools, we got to have houses and we got to have kids somewhere. And we need about five hundred of them pretty quick. So you know, as a community, we got to come together and figure out where we want them and how we're going to get this put together. It's kind of a big issue. I think we need to address it. And then also from the fire stance, whether it's the east side or the west side. We need to reduce the fuels on the south end of Helena. And if we are actually worried about it and it's not just rhetorical in a meeting like this, let's get active and let's start thinning the trees and let's start doing it and stop talking about it. It is an issue south of Helena with the with the trees we have there and our inability to manage our forests south of Helena. You know, as a community, we got to step up and do it. We got to reduce those fuels and we need some kids. That's all I got.
Thank you, Tyler. Ron.
Thank you very much. This is just public testimony. I I just wanted to say that I appreciate your time. We will continue to work on this plan. I am disappointed in the block length because this commission has has granted that almost in every subdivision. And I we will try to figure something out, but topography is a real issue as far as making this happen. But I do want to just thank all of you for your time and looking at this. And we will see if we can't scratch our heads and come someday back with with you. But thank you very much for your time.
I would also just like to echo, I mean, a lot of the public testimony has been, you know, pretty negative towards the developer. Obviously, I work for the developer, but I would just like to say that, you know, any realistic suggestion, Ron met with the Save Helena West Side group multiple times. Any reasonable suggestion, any condition, any condition from the school district, you know, Ron agreed to, they all made sense. They were great. So I would just like to let the commission know, you know, that public comment for what it is, you know, can be seen from both sides.
Thank you. Commissioner Fever, you want to wait a little bit until we finish the public comment or you want to just put a?
No, no, I'll wait, but I do have a question.
Okay, you bet. Commissioner, I mean, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, next in the queue, I have David Wilson.
You have the floor, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Kim Wilson, again, representing Save Helena West Side and just a couple of very quick remarks. We don't believe you can go forward with the subdivision as proposed with the variances denied. I agree with the city attorney coach that this is a material change under the city code twelve dash four dash fourteen A one, which says an amendment that may result in a change in the conditions for approval. And four, which is street layout resulting in a change in legal and physical access. So for those reasons, we urge you, as a urge you to vote to deny the subdivision and at the same time vote to deny the annexation. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Last hand I have raised, Mr. Mayor, is Jacob, Jacob Coops.
Mr. Coe, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I'll echo what Tyler said. The two thousand eighteen housing needs assessment identified that every year we needed two hundred homes in Helena. That was pre-pandemic. Pre-major increase in housing. This is a prominent prevalent issue that's facing Helena. There is no perfect development, no perfect subdivision. It's going to take creativity and action on behalf of the commission to get more housing in Helena. That's more desperately needed now than ever.
Are you there, Mr. Coop? Oh. Ms. Berry, I see your hands up, your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I I echo the comments shared by our attorney, Kim Wilson, and appreciate your willingness to put safety first on the block lengths and require the developer to go back to the drawing board and come up with a better plan. We did meet with the developer twice in the sixty day extension and each time he was unwilling to consider changes to the proposal itself and only off-site improvements were ones that he was willing to discuss. And so I hope with this move to deny annexation and preliminary plat due to the material change from the variance denial that the developer will be able to come back to us with a better plan, one that puts safety first and one that is in accordance with state code, city code and your growth plan objective to maintain public health, public safety and general welfare as highest priorities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one last hand. Patrick Maron.
You have to flow, Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Again, as a Helena Citizens Council District One representative on the west side of Helena, I would just like to ask if there's anyone who doesn't monetarily benefit, whether it's real estate or developer contractor is in favor of this to speak up. I have not heard from anyone within a mile radius of this development who has to live here and raise their children here approve of this development. And the commission, I believe, stated they would like to have safety and livability as a priority for the city of Helena citizens. So I just please ask that you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Fever.
Uh. The first motion or the first. Um. Item of business today, item A, uh, the, um. Pre-zoning property. Does that change by anything we are doing now?
I don't think so.
So when this issue.
Wait, 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 but, uh, I, I answer, but I prefer the, um, attorney answer. I don't want you to take my answer for Attorney Court. Please answer, Commissioner Fever, uh, Attorney Jordan.
Yeah, Mayor Collins, Commissioner Fever. I don't think it changes anything. Um, the, it's, it's a, what happened tonight for item twelve A was the first passage of the ordinance pre-zoning. Um, so now the, that property will show up on maps as. Pre-zoned R two and R three. Um. It won't, the order, or the, the zoning won't be effective until two, their second passage, and then three, the property is actually annexed into the city.
So what you've just said is when we revisit this issue, as I have, every expectation we will. We will not have to repeat that particular motion and action.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm assuming we had a motion and a second, right? Anybody can confirm that?
Well, I'll move that we deny, um.
Yeah, I believe, Mr. Mayor, I. Believe I made a motion to deny a resolution of intention to annex.
I'll second. I think I remember that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the commission? Madam Clerk, would you take the role?
Commissioner Dean.
I.
Commissioner Fever.
I.
Commissioner Logan.
I.
Commissioner Reed.
Hi.
Mayor Collins.
Hi.
The motion carries five to zero.
Okay. Delta, consider the preliminary plat for the west side. Is that it? Yeah. Consider the preliminary plat for the west side major subdivisions creating one hundred and three lots. And street right away for approximately fifty-eight point eight five acres. And to adopt the findings of fact and conditions continuing for the property legally described. In the findings of fact, manager Holoshock, Director Hagen, and Mr. McConnell.
Thank you, Mayor. Just in line with the last conversation of surrounding this annexation, this is the concert of, uh. The action. That it must be undertaken in accordance with the city code for the denial and reapplying. I'll turn it over to Sharon and to. Uh, Mike McConnell, Senator McConnell, if they would like that.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I believe, um. Maybe we should follow the advice of the city attorney. I'll let. Mr. McConnell add anything that he might and. I might note that this is my last motion. At my last commission meeting, so thank you all for your service.
Thank you so much, Sharon. Mr. McConnell, uh, you have anything you want to add?
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I, I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
Okay. Discussion from the commission? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, do we need to have public comment on this?
Yeah, but no commission discussion, right? Okay, public comments. Do you have anybody from the public wishes to address this topic?
Mr. Mayor, I have, uh, one hand raised at this time. I do have some written public comments following that, that I need to read into the record, if you don't mind.
Let's do the raised hand and then we'll go with the written comments. Mr. Wilson, you have floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would just note, I believe you had earlier said it was going to be a combined hearing on both the annexation and the subdivision. Um, so I, I think you've already covered that, but to the extent you want. Testimony as to the subdivision, we also believe it does not comply with the subdivision act and urge your denial of the subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other comments? The comments into, um. The record, please.
Yes, from Ann Williams Morgan and Lonnie Morgan. Thank you Commissioners Fever and Logan for seeing that the real issue leading to all the concerns of those that live here is density, which is directly related to zoning. It is disappointing to know that our concerns are so easily dismissed. Residents such as myself on Hauser Boulevard will not only have seven thirty-foot structures to deal with across the street from our large lot, single-family homes, but we will end up absorbing the real loss of appropriate property value. Galen Mac McAllister, I reiterate that I favor Sussex. Sussex developments. Developing this property, but I am deeply concerned about obvious safety problems in the current plan. Helena desperately needs this housing, but let's do it right to mitigate the safety, safety issues first and foremost. Sussex must convince the. DOT of the urgency of direct access to and from US twelve to the proposed subdivision. I concur that the development should not be accepted, accepted as is. I hope that Sussex will redesign the proposal and resubmit. Uh, from Liz Ulrich, as a parent of a student at Kessler, the school is at capacity and is concerned with too many students. Uh, Jeff A, I believe this was, um, an individual from earlier. I apologize, I cannot remember her name. Please continue to keep our community safety issues at the forefront. Please make certain that the development has solid plans before approving anything at this time. Save Helena West Side Group's comments and opinions are not personal yet made in the interest of our public safety. Jesse Herbert Meaney. I urge you to vote to deny the subdivision as planned. Please keep our community safety in mind. I am extremely concerned about the traffic at Kessler School and about the safety and the need of evacuation. And that is all I have for written comment.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission?
Do we have a motion to make here, Mayor?
We haven't done that, yes.
Uh, I move that, um, we, um. Not conditionally approve, uh, the, um. Preliminary plat for the west side major phase subdivision creating one hundred and three lots and street right away, et cetera.
Uh, before we move forward, Mr. Jordan.
Uh, yeah, Mayor, I just wanted to clarify, Commissioner Fever, is that motion to deny?
Well, I've tried, well, I would have said deny, except I'm looking right here at the recommended motion is to conditionally approve. So I thought, well, hell, I'll just say not. But deny would be the, uh, the shorter verb of things.
Okay.
Okay. It's been. Moved. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean. Commissioner Fever.
Yes.
Commissioner Logan.
I.
Commissioner, Mayor, Commissioner Reed, I apologize.
Hi.
Mayor Collins.
Hi.
The motion carries five to zero.
Okay, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission on any topic? Uh, Madam Clerk, I see below public communications Alpha Bravo Citizen Conservation Board letter west. Sidewood public comment. What do you mean?
Um, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, uh, the Citizens Conservation Board asked some time ago if, uh. You would all consider their letter that they, that I've attached to the packet this evening for, uh, you all to read. Um, I have reached out to Diana Hammer, who is the chairperson of the CCB. And let her know that this item was attached as public comment to the agenda this evening. Um. If she would like to make comment, I do believe she was on the meeting at one time, um. In reference to it, I think they were hoping that you would all just consider their notes within the letter. Um, on the second. Component, it is the public comment packet. Uh, one note I would make is that that public comment packet for the West Side Woods subdivision, major subdivision project. Only contains public comments received by my office and email written form. Up to Friday of last week, uh, which would have been the twenty fourth, uh, twenty first at four P M. Um, all other comments have been added to the permanent record following that. Um, so we are maintaining a digital record of all of those, but. In order to get the, um, public comment received up to that point into the packet for public consumption. Uh, we had to have a cutoff date.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. And we, I will take the, um. Citizen Conservation Board letter into consideration, and I hope the Commissioners will. Look at the letter and do what's right. Commissioner Dean.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, on the Citizen Conservation Board letter, um, appreciate Diana for bringing it back up to the top of our agenda again. Um. I would suggest that I think this is probably most appropriate with the. Upcoming Advisory Board bylaws revisions and some of the conversation around how those are organized and staffed. Um, I believe that will all be done well before, um. Before twenty twenty-three, um, what is it? This January twentieth, twenty twenty-three. So I think if we can lump that into. The overall advisory board conversation, that would be the most expeditious use of time.
Thank you. Do you have any other comments from the commission? Any other, anything else to discuss?
Mr. Mayor. Really quickly, I just wanted to say one last thank you to Sharon, and it's only fitting that your final meeting was four hours and one minute long. Um, but thank you, thank you, Sharon.
The meeting is not over yet, Commissioner. I'm just, I can see, I, I see a lot of tired faces, so, uh, I just want to thank the staff. I want to thank. The commission. For going through all of this and know that your work is appreciated. Thank you. And if nothing else. Is it one, is it ten oh two? This meeting is adjourned.